Okay, so we're gonna open up the Selectman Meeting of Monday, February 6, 2017 at 6:31. Can we please stand to pledge allegiance? Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as its own.
Well, I'd like to start the meeting out by, on behalf of the Town of Groveland and the Board of Selectmen, I would like to congratulate the Patriots for their unbelievable win last night and their historic winning. So, on behalf of the town again, you know, I know they'll be partying for next few days. That's a great, great thing. Moving forward, we have a public comment. We don't have anyone in. We had one that was in, but it was pulled away at the last minute. At that point, I will ask Mr. Watson if he could please read the warrants.
Approve, or make a motion to approve payroll warrant, number seventeen dash thirty-one in the amount of one hundred fifty-two thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars and thirteen cents.
Can you get a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Um, I'm gonna do a roll call.
Oh, that's right.
Mike's in.
Um, Mike Wood?
Mike says he's reconnecting.
I'll start with McDonald.
I'm in, I'm in favor.
Uh, Watson?
Uh, in favor.
Don Yes? O'Neil?
Yes.
Ann Wood? Denise? Can you fix him?
Uh, he's reconnecting. I can't, um, there he is. I can't, I can't see what happened. You have a majority, you can keep going.
Okay. All right, moving on Ed.
Uh, make a motion to approve deduction warrant number seventeen dash twenty-nine A in the amount of twenty-eight thousand, five hundred and twenty-three dollars and sixty-four cents.
Um, can I get a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Uh, McDonald?
In favor.
Watson?
Yes.
Don Yes? O'Neil?
Yes.
Ann Wood?
Yes.
Okay, moving on Ed.
Make a motion that we approve bill warrant number seventeen dash thirty-one in the amount of one million, three thousand, one hundred and sixty-nine dollars and fifty-five cents.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? McDonald? Watson?
Yes.
Don Yes? O'Neil?
Yes.
Ann Wood?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so moving on. We have a public hearing set at seven o'clock, so whatever other business I'm gonna do in the interim, we'll do up until seven o'clock and I'll abruptly shut it down at seven to start the public hearing. So, moving on to discussions and possible vote, uh, we had, um, Mr. Dealey was gonna come in and speak behalf, on behalf of the Washington Park and Center Street. I can say that I spoke with the Row Commissioner and Mr. Dealey this afternoon, and, um, everyone is happy, and we're gonna not have to talk about that tonight. Moving on, we're gonna talk about the surplus fire truck, which we put out to bid, and we put out to bid publicly, and we also had it out to bid privately, and that meant that people could put a bid in privately. So, to bring my board up to a breast, and what happened is we got a bid from the Town of Ashby early on for about forty-five hundred dollars. Uh, actually, sorry, thirty-five hundred. I had called the, and that was a private bid. I had called the chief and explained to him that the board thought the truck was worth more, the fire department thought the truck was more. In the conversation with the chief, I said, "We bid it again, and we bid it to the Finance Director, and we'll see how you do." At that point in time, his bid came in at forty-five hundred. At that point in time, we left it live. We went on with the public bidding. The public bidding went at sixty-one hundred dollars, and the Town of, uh, New York was...
Huntington, New York.
Huntington, New York came in at sixty-one hundred. At that point in time, um, the Town of Ashby turned around and rebid their bid at sixty-one hundred because they really wanted the truck. I had a conversation with the Finance Director, and I had told her, "The bids were closed on one thirteen at six PM. What do you think we should do?" She says, "Bring it to your board and let your board decide what they wanna do. I can tell you in the conversation with the Town of Ashby and our, our Fire Chief, the Town of Ashby needs the truck more than..."
Huntington, New York.
...because they don't have a truck, and they're renting a truck. That being said, I will let up the board that opens the discussion, what they would like to do with this.
Uh, will we open any liability i- if we, um, you know, sell it to Ashby as opposed to this place in New York where they, you know, went in line and wanted bid?
So, there's no requirement to accept a bid through the Munisabid online auction. They actually, when, when people are bidding on it, a disclaimer comes up and says, "It's still subject to vote by, vote by the Board of Selectmen, and you can certainly reject the bids if you so choose." I believe, and Bill might be able to correct this, I believe the Fire Chief has talked to this town or city of Huntington, and they are aware that another bid came in matching their bid because there's another small town that is in need of it. So, they know that there's this situation out there, um, so, they were made aware of it. Both communities know that the board was going to be discussing it this evening, um, to decide how to, how best to proceed.
Right, and my point was, is if we have two bids at sixty-one hundred, are we gonna go back and forth and ask them to rebid and et cetera, et cetera? Or do we, how I presented it, you guys make a decision on how I presented it?
Well, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, they both had the option, they knew this, they knew, both knew that they would bid sixty-one hundred. Uh, the Town of New York had a chance to up the bid before it was closed. They didn't do that, so both of them come in at sixty-one hundred.
If, if I may, Ed?
Go ahead.
So, that's actually not correct.
Okay.
Ashby.
The Town of Huntington or City of Huntington, they were bidding on Munisabid on the auction site. They were not aware another bid came in of sixty-one hundred.
Oh, okay.
Ashby was following the Munisabid and knew what the final price was, so they came in to match the top price. Had they bid on Munisabid, it wouldn't be a tie. Someone would have to be a higher bid.
Okay.
So, that's really the difference. Ashby was following it. Huntington did not know another town that was out there.
Right, and also, the Town of, the Town of Huntington is paying more money because Munisabid costs more money to run through Munisabid.
They have to pay a fee to Munisabid.
Right, so they're gonna end up, they're actually not paying it to the Town of Groveland, but it's after, that truck's actually costing them more money. Not that it really matters, so...
Yes.
Anyone else have any input?
I, I question?
All right, one second, Dan raised his hand. Go ahead, Dan.
You know, if it's a tie, I mean, you, you, there's a couple things, I think you could go back if procedurally it's permitted, uh, ask them for the highest, the highest and best final, but, um, certainly I'm looking out for, you know, the budget here in town, but if I had to pick between one or the other, I'd go with a Massachusetts town over a New York town. Nothing against New York, but, you know, you keep it local type of thing. So, I don't know if we can squeeze more money out of them, but is it really worth the effort to go back, try to get a hundred bucks on a one-up? You know, if it was up to me, Bill, I'd probably just, uh, sell it to the Massachusetts town.
Okay. Um, Mike, you wanted to talk?
Is that sixty-one hundred dollars more than we anticipated for, or selling it as scrap metal?
Yes.
I never thought it was worth scrap metal, I'll make that note.
I believe the chief...
I thought it was what, right, right where it came in.
I believe the chief declared it at thirty-five hundred when he declared it surplus.
And which town did you say you would think needed it more?
So, after the, after the chief spoke to both communities, Huntington, New York, this was going to be an additional truck on their already existing line of trucks. Um, Ashby is currently renting a truck and is in more, in his opinion, is in more need of a truck. They're a smaller town in Massachusetts.
Yeah, I, I would say that for sixty-one hundred dollars, if we're getting more than we thought we would get initially, then, um, I would be in favor of helping out the town who needs it more.
And the sale is as-is, right? I mean, they know that there's some...
Yes.
Issues with the truck.
Yeah, so they, um, Ashby, Mass had their mechanic out, and they've determined it needs about fifteen hundred dollars on top of paying for it to restore it, to get it in working condition. So, they are aware of that.
Fifteen hundred bucks?
Yes.
Sellable, Austin, seven hundred and fifty thousand. And we didn't know that.
Well, also, it's going to a town, too, where, it's going to a town.
Two hundred towns in New York.
Right, right. So, originally, it wasn't gonna go to a town. They didn't think it was gonna go to a town because it was, couldn't be used, but here and there, it's where we are. And my, I'll, I'll just say my input one more time is, where I don't, I don't fit comfortable with this is, you know, number one, they had a bid, and they went and they read, they read what the, the up, the up bid was, and then bid la- last minute, up, over and above the bidding time. So, I mean, yeah, they might, obviously might need it more, but legality-wise, it doesn't really matter, I guess, you're saying that?
No, this board has the right to accept and reject any of this.
So, we just closed Munisabid at, at five, but the other, we never told them when to close on the private bidding.
Well, I mean, there really was no private bidding. I mean, we weren't accepting private bids from anybody else. It's just Ashby saw, the way it happened was Ashby saw it posted on Munisabid and reached out, spoke to the Fire Chief. He directed him to me, which is when that first bid came in. So, there really wasn't a private bid, if you will. It's just they were following it and bidding sort of, I don't think Ashby could afford the fee that Munisabid charges, which is why they came direct to us and did not bid on the site.
Okay. Well, if someone wants to make a motion on the, which way they'd like to go?
Yeah, I, I, excuse me, I will, I'll make a motion that we, uh, sell to the Town of Ashby, uh, for the price of sixty-one hundred, a surplus ladder truck.
I'll second that.
Again, any further discussion? All in favor? Mike Wood?
Opposed.
Opposed?
Yeah.
O'Neil?
Uh, yes.
Yes? Don, um, opposed. Watson?
Yes.
And McDonald?
Approved.
Okay, so it passes, it's gonna go to the Town of Ashby. Okay. Moving on, we have the fiscal year 2018 budget discussion. Uh, well, we can move on and go to something else. We can, the votes of the board. We have the minutes from the January ninth, 2017 meeting. Someone wanna make a motion?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I looked that over, uh, just like a correction, or not a correction, rather, an addition. I had asked a question of, to, um, I can't remember the name here, uh, to Elevated Access Center about payment in lieu of taxes, and, uh, I know my colleague, Dan McDonald, had mentioned the fact that they're a nonprofit and they could, uh, they could ask for an exemption, or, uh, the Finance Director had said that they're gonna be paying taxes, real estate taxes. My colleague said that they could ask for an exemption. That, that's not reflected in the minutes here that, that we have in front of us, so I'd just like that added. Maybe we have the Finance Director play it back and, uh, uh, we can, we can pass that at the end.
Can I ask the audience for no talking while we're, while we're having business because people can't hear? Thank you. I'm sorry, Ed.
Oh, I'm done.
Okay. I wasn't, I was distracted. Okay, so...
Can I just, uh, correct, where was it? It's that fourth paragraph up on page three, right?
Um, uh, yes.
Okay. I will replay that and find out what Dan followed up with.
Okay. Do you remember Dan mentioning about that?
Yeah, I mean, I, it was a statement slash question. My understanding is that nonprofits can apply for exemptions, so I wanna validate or invalidate that relative to the specific industry, whether nonprofit, uh, corporation. My understanding that under the Dover Amendment of the zoning act, uh, that it's po- it's possible to do so. So, if that's not true, I'd like to find out. If it's true, I'd also like to find out. I did make comments to that point, yes.
Okay, so I will, um, watch the video, add it to the minutes for you to vote on next week, and then I'll find out, Dan, an answer to your question.
Thank you.
Okay. So, moving on, we have the op- open, uh, where was I? Yeah, the, um, executive session minutes from January, um...
No, you're up on the previous one. Votes of the Board, open town meeting warrant.
Okay.
Please.
Open, open the town meeting warrant.
So, it just needs to be a formal vote of the board, um, just to formally open the town meeting warrant so people can start submitting their articles. I've already started compiling them, but we need an official vote of the board just to, for record-keeping purposes. And then, um, I would like to ask that all articles be submitted to me no later than March tenth, um, and then at your March twentieth meeting, the warrant will formally close, so no additional articles can go on after that point.
Okay. Someone make a motion?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion. We open the town meeting, uh, warrant, uh, and everything we need to be submitted, uh, for the warrant by, uh, March tenth, the Finance Director. See, we could, uh, act on that.
Can I get a second?
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Wood?
Yes.
O'Neil?
Yes.
Don Yes? Watson?
Yes.
And McDonald?
Yes.
Okay. So, we're taking care of that. So, we're going on to correspondence, I guess. Uh, we, you have correspondence from the January twenty-third, 2016 meeting. We have executive session minutes from January twenty-third, 2017 at five forty-five. We have executive session minutes from January twenty-third, 2017, eight thirty. We have a response from the Attorney General regarding the open meeting law complaint filed by Heather M- Manager. Um, I will say that, as far as I'm concerned, this is not gonna be discussed any further. I will publicly say that I was interviewed by the Attorney General's office, and I was found one hundred percent not at fault, and we'll leave it at that. And I know other people wanted to know what went on, and we'll, we'll go from there. The disclosure of the appearance of a conflict of interest from the Deputy Police Chief Gillen. That's in there as well. So... I guess we can do any old business? Is anyone having any old business?
I don't have any.
Mike, do you?
I'm good.
No, you all set?
Uh, the trash, I guess we were contacted, that that was, uh, an anomaly, that during a snow event, the trash will be picked up, and it's not gonna be...
Correct, so they have apologized, um, they admitted that was a mistake on their part, um, they followed the forecast and not actually what the weather was the next morning, um, so they have assured us that will not happen again in the future. Um, they're, they have a relatively new manager who made that call, and they've had meetings since then, 'cause many towns are in that same situation, and, so they have assured us they will not be doing that again.
Wait, are you good, Dan, with old business?
Uh, two times.
Go ahead.
I'd like to schedule another, um, meeting in the future relative to the security at the Bagno issue for executive session. Now, your discretion, Mr. Chairman.
Um...
The other issue is, uh, following up on, um, and again, the subject matter is, uh, executive session issue, uh, contract negotiations, uh, let's get down there now, that's our next step in the process.
Okay, so, if I could ask, um, if we could get those scheduled in, I guess we're gonna have to hold the board on times when we can do it, or whatever, um, and we'll move forward with that.
Sure.
Okay. Anyone else have any on the old business?
What, yeah, Bill, what was the request for that? It was an executive session request for what?
For, um, an update or follow-up on the Bagno, um, security and contract negotiations.
Okay.
Okay. So, moving on, I think I've gone through everything except for the...
Do you want me to do my few things on Finance Director?
Yep, I was gonna go on next, yep.
Um, so I just wanted to go through the following Board and Committee positions that are up for election on May first. Um, I'll just go through them quickly. Um, there's one vacancy for Board of Assessors for a three-year term. Cemetery Commission, there's one vacancy for a three-year term. Board of Health, there are three vacancies, one for a one-year term, one for a two-year term, and one for a three-year term. The Groveland Housing Authority, there are two vacancies, one for a two-year term, one for a four-year term. The Board of Library Trustees, there are three vacancies, each for a three-year term. Um, Electric Light Commission, there is one vacancy for a three-year term. Moderator, one vacancy for a one-year term. The Planning Board has two vacancies, each for a five-year term. Uh, School Committee, there are two vacancies, one for a two-year term, one for a three-year term. Board of Selectmen, there are two vacancies, each for a three-year term. Tree Warden, one vacancy for a one-year term. And Water and Sewer Commissioners, there are two vacancies, one for a two-year term and one for a three-year term. The last day to take out nomination papers is Friday, March tenth. The last day to submit nomination papers is Monday, March thirteenth by five PM, and the town election is on May first. Um, and then the only other thing I have for this board and just some people that have contacted us regarding two fifty-five School Street, um, so that is a property that has been abandoned, um, and there's some debris and trash piling up on the property. Our building inspector has been working on it, and we had some concern last week from the school department. Uh, we spoke to the property management company. Um, the tenants that were in there have been evicted, so now they can move forward with having the, um, debris removed from the property. So, they are waiting on approval from HUD and the bank, um, to approve the quotes to get that debris removed. So, while it was going through the eviction, they were not legally allowed to take anything off that property. Uh, now that that's complete, they're working on getting that debris removed, 'cause it is somewhat of a health hazard at this point, so... And that's all I have.
Okay. Anyone having any on the Selectmen's time? Go ahead, Ed.
Uh, just, just one item. Can we get the flag at Town Park, put back up to...
Yes.
Okay.
Who's, who's taking, uh, the Police Department takes care of all that?
Yes.
Mike, you have any?
No, I'm good.
Okay, Bill, you good?
Yes.
Selectmen's time? Dan?
Just the old business and, you know, obviously, yeah, budgets and all that.
Yeah, we're gonna have to go back to that. Okay, so, I think we kinda went through everything, we're not quite ready for this. I don't think there's much more we can go through, right?
It's, it's up to you, if there's anything else to talk about?
No, I don't see any. Take a recess until seven?
Sure.
Tracy? Take a recess until seven? It was a controversial hearing, that's why I asked for the hearing. I thought it was the right and the most public, um, and the right thing to do for the public to have their hearsay. Uh, we're gonna get started, and the first thing I need to do is I need to have the legal notice read, and Mr. Watson will read it.
I'll read it. On January thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen, this dated, legal notice, public hearing, medical cannabis cultivation facility and dispensary. The Groveland Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Monday, February sixth, two thousand and seventeen, at seven PM, in the main meeting room of Town Hall, one eighty-three Main Street, Groveland, Mass. Looking for resident input on a potential medical cannabis dispensary at Federal Way and Salem Street, and the possibility of a medical cannabis cultivation center in Groveland at a location yet to be determined. Signed, Board of Selectmen.
Okay. I would like to roll call into, um, public meeting, um, and I would ask McDonald?
Present.
Watson?
Yes.
Don Yes? O'Neil?
Yes.
Ann Wood? Wood?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, I'm gonna ask the representatives to start speaking from Elevated Access, and please go to the podium. And if everyone can refrain from any kind of comments, please just be, uh, whatever you call it to our speakers. Thank you.
So, I just wanna thank you all for coming tonight. Tonight, um, from Elevated, we have Rob Proctor, who is our CEO. He's also a Massachusetts business owner and a cancer survivor. Um, we have Rebecca Adams, who's an Executive Director, Scott Patano, who is a consultant, and myself. My name is Jill Osborne. My official title is Outreach Director, but I'm technically a volunteer. Um, I am a local mom. I have a daughter who's using cannabis to treat her seizures successfully, and so I am passionate about this, and that's how I got involved. Um, Elevated is a nonprofit medical marijuana applicant, um, in the state of Massachusetts. We are applying for licenses for three retail locations, which would all be served by one single cultivation center. We hope to find a site within town to consider for cultivation, but I know that many of you had concerns about the, um, the original Estee Park location. We are no longer considering that due to its, uh, proximity to so many residences. We do not feel it's a good fit, and, you know, I hope that, that you know that we're listening to you as well, and we heard that you don't think that that's a good location for us either.
Can I interrupt you?
Yeah.
So, that's four forty-one Main Street?
Correct.
Okay, so everyone understands four forty-one Main Street's off the table, and one of the reasons it's off the table is because it just doesn't fit the bylaw.
It does not fit the zoning at all.
So, it, you can't have these centers, um, within a school zone, within a park, residential areas, so go through this. I'm asking you to keep that in mind. Thank you. Go ahead.
Yep, our prospective locate, retail location that we're considering right now is the vacant lot at the corner of Route ninety-seven and Federal Way. Um, why Groveland? We've heard that question a lot. Why this small town? Um, we aren't necessarily looking for a high-voluminous location. We really would like to locate in a small town that will feel the impact from the financial benefits that a business like this, you know, can provide. We also, um, rather than attracting patients from other towns, we would really like the opportunity to serve local patients that are currently underserved. Benefits to the town, every town has the right to negotiate a host agreement, so some towns like to do a straight amount, some towns like to do a percentage of sales. We understand that that's a cost of doing this kind of business, so we are open to the fact that your town will likely want to negotiate a host agreement, too. The purpose of the host agreement is to offset any cost burdens that there would be to the town for hosting this kind of business. And many of them contain clauses, so that if there are additional costs down the line that aren't foreseen, then those would be covered or submitted to the, to the RMD as well. Jobs, we expect our retail location to offer anywhere between thirty to forty jobs, and should we find a location within the bylaws, um, that we could, we could also do cultivation, and that would be another, probably about a hundred jobs. So, we are looking to bring a lot of jobs to the area. We are committed to hiring local residents. Entry-level jobs start at fifteen dollars an hour, but, you know, if you are a mom and you want some, some work while your child's in school, then we have those flexible hours as well. Management positions and higher-level, uh, positions would enter in the hundred thousand dollar-plus range. Jobs will include areas of cultivation, so if you have a green thumb. Processing, um, we do plan to implement a, uh, a, um, non-solvent solvent processing method, so there would be none of the explosion concerns that sometimes people hear about with butane. Baking, so if you are a baker. Security, HR, payroll, administrative staff, and retail representatives as well. A lot of the common concerns that we hear, um, and that we have too, because we're all residents and we're all parents, and we all have to live in Massachusetts as well, this product or, will end up in the town youth, in the hands of the town youth, redirection, they call it. Medical-grade cannabis carries a high overhead cost, because we're not growing in a closet. It matters if we, it matters that we don't use pesticides. It matters that our product doesn't have mold. Everything is done in a clean room environment, so you have to keep clothes dedicated to work at work, so they never get to go home with you. So you have to keep clothes dedicated to work at work, so they never get to go home with you. And the pricing averages more than double, almost triple street value. So it wouldn't make sense for someone to walk in, pay triple street value, and then turn around and try to sell that at a loss. Safety and crime. Americans for Safe Access has a collection of studies in states that have implemented legalization laws. And you can reference those, but most of them, well, actually, all of them show no increase in crimes in cities that host RMDs. You can also check with the towns that currently have marijuana dispensaries here in Massachusetts, and none of them have reported any kind of crime increase as well. Will people be able to use this in the parking lot? Will they walk in and buy a joint and walk out and smoke it? Absolutely not. The Department of Public Health completely prohibits onsite consumption. So our license plus the person's medical card would both be at risk. We would never tolerate anything like that. And driving. It's a concern for all of us. The Department of Public Health requires that the patient handbook inform the patient that it is not legal to drive while under the influence, similar to the way you would get a warning on a prescription that says you may not operate heavy machinery. I hope that I've given you a little bit of an introduction, and we really are just open to hearing all of your concerns. Thank you.
Okay, is everyone on behalf of cannabis done speaking? Or anyone else want to speak? Go ahead. Oh, you're all done? Okay. All right, so now I am gonna open it to the public to start speaking. If you want to raise your hand, and I will let you go to the podium and speak. Go ahead, Joe.
Good evening. And my name is Joe Demore, nine Cherry Tree Lane. Thank you for your presentation. I don't have a stated opinion or position on the issue, but I do have some concerns that I'd like to share. And hopefully, there'll be, some of this or all of it will become part of the discussion. And there are five concerns. There are three facilities in the area, north of Boston, one in Waltham, one in Framingham, and one in Ayer, Massachusetts. And the facility in Waltham also doubles up as a methadone clinic. So I believe that if we were to consider having a facility in our town, that the permitting would be very narrow. And that is specifically for folks that have medical profiles related to chemotherapy issues and seizures and the full spectrum of pain. And I'm sure that that would be the case, but something that I'd like to mention. I did, second item, did take a look a little bit at crime statistics, and I can verify also that I was not able to find anything. However, what I did not do, which I would suggest for anyone to do, is to secure through the Freedom of Information requests from those three towns to see if there are any crimes that were linked or could be linked to those facilities. The third item, I think, is probably the most, the item that I'm most passionate about. I believe that the decision of this town to either include a dispensary or not should default to the three types of people that are most impacted. And here they are. Number one, the abutters, the people who actually live there or as close to it as possible. The second would be folks that have schoolchildren. I mean, we're not that close. The location that's being proposed is not that close to a school, but it's very close to some school bus stops. And some people may have some concerns. And then we have to also give a lot of consideration to people that may use the facility that come from our town, whether it's themselves or their families. The fourth item, oversight problem. I have a concern about oversight of a very complex facility enshrouded with new laws. I believe that there will be federal, state laws that apply, Department of Health laws. I'm not sure if our town, with the current management structure, and this is not, I don't mean to insult anyone, but we don't have a town manager here. I'd be very concerned about, once a permit is issued, how are we gonna actually regulate this going forward? How are we going to monitor it and know that all the rules are being followed? That's a concern. We are a small town. We don't have, I believe, the level of management to regulate such a complex business. And it's not a tax-generating business. People have to know that. It is a nonprofit organization, and it's going to be subject to us negotiating a very good contract to receive a series of payments. And I don't know how long that contract would last and what happens when it's time to renew. The last thing I'll say is, we should never make a decision to include this facility or this type of facility because it's a good way to expand the tax base. I think it's very important that we default to the people that are mostly impacted and evaluate it mostly on that. And never, never should, the argument that it would be good to, you know, bring money to the town to do this business. This is not a pizza shop. This is a very complex business. And I do worry about how we can regulate it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I do have these comments in writing, which I'll submit for the record.
Okay, thank you. Would anyone else speak on behalf, or against? Go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Steve Rivers. I'm from Eight Clark Road in Groveland. And I have a number of concerns myself. Some of them are how this will affect the water supply in town, if in fact a cultivation facility is determined. We're a well-water town, and I know that agriculture has been a part of Groveland for a long time in the past. But I'm concerned more now, as water becomes a bigger issue around the community, how that will affect us. I'm also concerned about the hours of operation that the facility, whether it's the dispensary or the cultivation facility, will be operating under. If those will be normal business hours, and if there's a change in those business hours, how the town will address them? Will it be an open forum where there'll be input from the community as well before those hours are granted? I know that in, for example, in Easton, where they have, I believe, passed the ability for cultivation and dispensary. Initially, the service was for medical marijuana only. Once the, I believe it was after the November ballot question was passed to Massachusetts, they changed it to recreational as well. I'm concerned about how that's gonna affect what's going on in this town, if you will in fact ever have a recreational facility at that same location. Also, what are the town's impact for traffic studies? You know, when I moved into this town, we had one blinking light. We now have one operating light. I don't know what the traffic patterns will be in terms of traffic on and off of Route ninety-seven. But I'd like to know what the studies have been or what they will be and how that will be addressed. And then, what is, I guess, one of the questions that I'd like to know is, what's in it for the town? You know, you guys pick a small town like Groveland with sixty-five hundred residents as opposed to a larger city where it wouldn't be as noticeable nor would it be as impactful to the rest of us, that we would see traffic just for that service. So I'm curious to know more about why you picked Groveland as opposed to a larger city. And then what the timelines are gonna be. I don't, I haven't heard anything in terms of timelines, particularly in terms of, once the service is approved. And I know there are multiple phases that the project has to go through. But from start to finish, what the timelines would be? And then, my understanding, and I'm not an expert, but the DEA, I believe, still considers marijuana a class-one drug, much the same as heroin or ecstasy or some of those other drugs. So I'm concerned about that being close to school. And I hear we're not that close to school, but the Bagnell School is not that far away, nor is the ice cream place where kids hang out or the coffee shop on the street. So I'm concerned about the effect of the proximity of it. And then what is the process from the town in terms of, will this be something that will be a ballot question that the voters will approve before a decision is made? Or is it going to be something that the Board of Selectmen makes that decision on without actual commitment from the voters? And then what other safeguards would the facility take in terms of protecting the kids from going down there and hanging out? It's an industrial area. There isn't a lot of after-hours traffic. It might be a cool place to hang out. So I'd be curious to know what steps are being taken. A few years ago, when they were moving the basketball court from Elm Park, there was some vocal opposition to moving it because parents wanted to know who was gonna be watching their kids when it got moved to the banks. I'm more concerned about who's gonna be watching what's going on down there. And I've read your letter. I know there'll be closed-circuit TVs, but let's face it. Kids will hang out where they're not supposed to hang out. And also, I'm glad to see that you're here. I was curious what the Groveland Police's position is on this. If there is a public opinion that the police department has on having this service in town. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else that you'd like to speak? Okay, I'll get you next, and there's one behind you.
Good evening. Claire Walsh, four seventy-eight Main Street. I have several questions. First of all, this probably is directed to the company. Because Georgetown is opening up a growing site as well as a store in May, why would you want to put something so close to Georgetown?
Do you want to wait? Do you want to wait?
Sure.
It's up to you. Go ahead. It will just make, drag things on. So take all your notes, and then I'm gonna give you time to rebuttal. But Claire, what we'll do is, we're gonna let them come back with all the, answer the questions, so.
Okay.
All right?
Okay. I have a question as to where the revenue is gonna go for the sales. What's it gonna be used for? Is it gonna be used for the schools, improve the roads?
That would be more directed to us.
Right. And, you know, federally, marijuana is against the law. So what happens if the federal government DEA decides they're gonna really enforce this? Where do we stand if we allow this? And, you know, I have other concerns too, but I think they've pretty well been mentioned this evening. The children, school bus stops.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Okay. We had, you go ahead.
Lisa Carpenter, two Merrimack River, Groveland. So some, oh, sorry. Some of my concerns have already been raised, but I have several concerns. Most importantly, I reviewed the DPH application that Elevated Access submitted to the Department of Public Health, applying for their licensing. And what I noted from that was that the individuals that were applying for that license owned an HVAC business. It didn't appear that there was any history with, is that kinda like that noise?
No, they're fixing it on over.
It didn't appear that there was any history in this area. So I'm concerned about kind of this dispensary kind of being the training ground for an organization that really hasn't done this before. And it appeared that they were gonna be contracting out the actual grow piece as well, that they weren't gonna be doing that themselves. Another concern that I had in kind of researching is that other jurisdictions that have had dispensaries have had an issue with odor and pesticides. I did hear that they weren't planning on using pesticides, but that doesn't address the odor question. I agree that there's no evidence of an increase in crime. However, there's evidence from the Rocky Mountain Report out of Colorado that marijuana-related traffic deaths increased forty-eight percent from two thousand thirteen to two thousand fifteen. So I think that number's somewhat concerning. I'm also concerned that currently there is no mechanism to assess whether somebody's impaired. Right now, law enforcement agencies have what they call drug recognition experts, but I'm not aware that Groveland has someone with that training. So I don't believe that there would be any mechanism to determine whether somebody was under the influence. And again, that's a safety concern. Another concern that I have is that what the law currently states is that if a jurisdiction allows or approves a medical dispensary, that that can transform into a retail marijuana shop, and they have the right to locate in any area where there's a dispensary. So what that says to me is that even if the intent of this organization were to just have a medical dispensary, they would then have the right to have a retail marijuana site. I agree with the issue that marijuana remains a Schedule One drug under the Federal Controlled Substance Act. Another issue is, some of the other research that I found was that within jurisdictions that have the retail establishments, the incidence of teenage marijuana use has gone up twenty to forty percent. That's a really concerning number to me. Because I don't think that, for me, this doesn't come down to the issue of whether somebody has the right to use marijuana. I think that's an individual right. But I don't think that that necessarily translates to the need to have a dispensary. I think those are separate issues. And then I think finally, I'm really interested to hear what the Board of Selectmen has done for due diligence because I've read through the Rocky Mountain Report. I'm interested to hear what due diligence the board has done in determining whether this is a good decision. Thank you.
Would anyone like to speak on behalf?
First of all, let me share with you that I am in full support of medical marijuana. I'm delighted to hear that this has had a real positive impact in your daughter's life. And I really support that.
Your name, please?
Dick Hodges, thirty-five Union Street. I got a great memory. It's just short. I read the newspaper every day, the Lawrence Eagle Tribune, and I go to the obituary section faithfully for two reasons. Number one, not to see my picture. And the other is, it is an incredible number, young and old, but mostly young, that we're looking at young people, eighteen, twenties, thirties. We're going to their funerals. They're overdosing all over the place. They're dropping like flies. And we are, as a state, I'm embarrassed, I'll be up front. My prejudice is, I voted against it. I've had firsthand experience with that. But it just makes no sense. And I kind of feel like I missed the funeral of common sense. It died somewhere. It just absolutely makes no sense at all. I'm not so sure that the cannabis center, particularly since all of this is laid out in Georgetown. Now, where you're sitting, it takes exactly eight minutes to get to the light in Georgetown. That's not a heavy-duty trip. And I drive an SUV, and I can afford that. So that should not hamper anyone. Smoking anything is not healthy. But I would support your freedom to smoke anything you want. If you wanna smoke banana peels, go for it. And the other thing is, we have access to marijuana legally through a doctor. And we also have access illegally. I can smoke pot anytime I want. I don't and won't. I can do that anytime I want in my own home, and I don't have to share that with you. It has the same cancer-causing chemicals found in tobacco. It affects the mind. It's linked to health, safety, social behavioral, and academic problems. Drug can affect concentration, attention, impairments in memory retrieval, and mental aptitudes. How do I know? I spent forty-six years as an educator, as a teacher, and as an administrator. I saw what potheads look like, how they behave, what they can't do, and what their challenges are. And we're moving and making this more available? Outrageous, if not despicable. It's always been a gateway. It is not addictive, but it does psychologically create dependencies. Working in a high school, I also saw that this loosens inhibitions, and you can just imagine what that does for some of our young people whose frontal lobe does not fully develop till they're twenty-five. So guess what? They're gonna make some meat-headed decisions. And some of those decisions are wrong and lifelong. And with our diminished moral fiber in this country, I, boy, that's really tricky. So I would encourage, I would encourage the selectmen that are here and the town that this is probably one of the most unnecessary things that this town has ever talked about. And we need to protect our kids, and we need to be reinforcing. And quite frankly, if we're gonna do all of this, if this is a moneymaker, then if we really wanna be liberal, let's bring back prostitution and make some real bucks.
Anybody else wanna speak on or against? Show coming up.
Hi, good evening. My name is Maria Reed, fifteen Pandora Drive. I just, I apologize, I just found out about this meeting this morning. But I have very strong feelings regarding this topic. I sincerely am glad it is, it is helping your child. Like a lot of people here, I'm a parent, and, and I can certainly understand how that would be important. However, I live very close in terms of, you know, the neighborhoods to the area. And my, my first concern, my greatest concern, is I grew up in an era where, to the gentleman's point, there were the kids in my high school who did, who did smoke. And as an intellectual person, a person who didn't want to do things like that, the reason is because they were all so foggy all the time. My concern, because where I live, because seeing, seeing, or seeing just afterwards, a neighbor of ours in this pass away from a horrific traffic accident, people fly up and down that road. And to think of anybody being impaired at a time when we do not have a breathalyzer or something else to help us get that under control, to tax a small town, and one of the reasons, unless you were born here, what have you, one of the reasons a lot of us live here and move here, is because of the small town. So, we have small town, a small-town police force, which we're very proud of. However, we just don't, in my, in my mind, without a town manager and things, we don't have the infrastructure also to regulate the, the literal traffic and the figurative traffic that this might cause. I'm also frankly concerned about property values. I don't think it's a great idea to locate these places in, I realize it's not a residential neighborhood, but it, ninety-seven is not far from. Also, anybody who's driven ninety-seven in the morning and the evening, in the morning specifically knows the traffic, the impact of the sun, and things like that. I just don't believe art, it is set up, our, our small town is, is set up as to be such a place where this should be located. I also have to wonder about the issues that Haverhill has had with not allowing a dispensary. It seems to me the obvious piece of this, and I'm in retail, is to establish a site where you can draw people right from Haverhill. We have one right in Georgetown. I sincerely don't feel that this is a necessary, a necessary piece. Probably, just to finish, my greatest concern is that even the federal government still has this as illegal. I don't think that our small town need to help this whole situation work out the bugs in, in what I think will be an ongoing process about making this work well in the Commonwealth.
Thank you. Any, anyone else want to speak on or against? Please give your name.
My name's Albert Crapo. Left, excuse me, I just found out about this meeting five minutes before I got here. Read, my wife seen it in the paper, and it upset me quite a bit. I grew up in Haverhill, and I worked twenty-seven years in public services, service as a inspector in Haverhill. Got to know a lot of good tradesmen, people that worked hard, went to school, a lot of young fellows growing up, and a great deal of the young people that I grew up with today are heroin and OxyContin addicts. And I gotta tell you, having known them and having worked for big plumbing companies in different places, is they all started with pot. Regular smoking, potheads. And they graduated to the big time. All right? So, I'm here to tell you, it's dangerous for medical use, let a doctor prescribe it. I don't think we need one in a, a distributing place in a little town like Groveland. Okay? Another thing is, a little over a week ago, I've been here three or four years, my wife got up at four-thirty in the morning, saw a kid behind the doors of our cars. I had left mine open. He went in and rifled through the truck. This kid, my son had to chase him down the street in his underwear and bare feet at four-thirty in the morning in the cold. This kid, I will almost bet you is at least a pothead, looking for some spare money. This town doesn't need this. If you're telling me they got one in Georgetown, why do we need another one here? Haverhill refused it. A big town like Haverhill, they've got big industrial parks. Okay? Away from housing and families, and I guess they what? Refused to have it? Reconsidered or whatever, it's not there? I'd like to know from the people that are here supporting it. Possibly the few sitting here representing a company. Do you have one in your town?
Yes.
You do?
I live in Georgetown.
Well, I think that's close enough. We, if we need it, somebody needs it. And I understand it could help somebody probably with some diseases. Let them travel or get it at the drugstore. Is it available in a drugstore? Can you get it by prescription? And is that because it's against federal law?
I think marijuana is good.
Do we need to get hooked into having somebody invest money into a building to get going with this big thing that, things are changing in this country right now. We got a new president. We're gonna have a new Supreme Court. And I don't think he believes in pot for everybody. There can't be that many sick people in Groveland, in Georgetown, that we need distribution centers. Think, I'm just totally opposed to it.
Thank you very much. Does anyone else?
My name's, my name's Ken Noyes, thirty-three Rollins Street. Kinda new to town, we've been here for about a year. I'm a pharmacist, so I know the dangers of opioids, benzodiazepines. I just wanna tell you a story about my sister who, you know, I've had, this is kind of a, you know, this, this is something that hits me personally. I'm glad it's helping your daughter as well, but my sister's been suffering from, you know, various psychiatric conditions. She was diagnosed with Asperger's, mood disorders, bipolar disorder, you name it. By the time she was, I think, twelve years old, she was on six hundred milligrams of Seracel day. She was on, just, she was up to six milligrams of Ativan a day. Okay? Six milligrams of Ativan, anybody knows how much that is? Okay? It's weren't even touch her. She was, she was off the rails all the time. She couldn't, you know, she's a brilliant kid, was not going, you know, has not been, was not in school, was not able to focus. She's about twenty-three right now. So, recently she was granted a, a license, a medical license for marijuana, and she does go to the dispensary. It's pretty expensive, as you know. So, no one's gonna, you know, go into the dispensary and wanna buy a three-hundred-dollar, you know, bag of pot. But she's completely weaned off all prescription medications. She's completely weaned off Ativan. If you know anything about Ativan, the side effects from withdrawing from it can be deadly, can cause seizures, and it's one of the only drugs you can actually die from withdrawal, as well as alcohol, by the way. So, she's completely weaned off all medication, medications. She's currently going to school at UMass, and she is, just got three days in her first semester. So, I, I know you say it's a small town, why do we need a small town? I, I don't know, maybe, you know, the way I see it is, you know, people in a small town deserve the same access as, as, as somebody in a city. And it's, you know, you, you should not, I mean, it's, I, I can see the arguments definitely about the people that live in, in the area, and, you know, I do agree that the people around the surrounding area should, you know, have some say in it. I think that's fair to say. But I just don't want, you know, people here to not see the medical benefits and, you know, look into stories, you know, here, here, just, just do a little thing, you know, read the laws, see how it benefits people, and read the dangers of opioids. Because if you wanna get a prescription for an opioid, you can go to the pharmacy, you can get a giant bottle of, of opioids, store in your closet, and your kids could potentially get that, and it's gonna be a lot worse than them, than them, you know, smoke a little pot, which, you know, and this is not going to affect, and not to mention, this is not going to increase the amount, I highly doubt it's gonna increase the amount of some of the streets anyways. But just, just consider that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wanna get up and speak on or be ha, on or against?
My name's Bill Flynn. I'll give you a little background. I'm a cancer survivor. I have thirty-five years sobriety from alcohol. And I'm also the president of the Mass Cannabis Reform Coalition. What I'm here today is, you know, I wanted to hear some of the concerns, 'cause this is a small town, like you said. And yes, there is one over in Georgetown, or in the process of being developed in Georgetown. I come from Salem, okay? And Salem had the first dispensary opening. Took three years to get that dispensary open. For me to go down, to finally go down and buy my cannabis as a medical patient, and turn around and pay four hundred dollars. Come on now. Your kids aren't gonna be running to this place to buy cannabis. If your kid's got four hundred dollars, three hundred dollars, your kid's better off. Okay? Listen, the dispensary opened up to help patients. This isn't about, you know, expanding anything. All right? This is out here to help people. Alternative medicine, okay? About being well. You've gotta do your research. You can't just come out here and beat a group up 'cause they wanna do something, try and prove, improve other people's lives, as well as their own. Okay? They found something that works for them, and it's up to them, and any of you, you find something that works for you, it's up to you to express it to somebody else and say, hey, this helped me, it could help you. You should have that opportunity. And if it doesn't work for you, that's okay, but you can't deny, whether it's a child or your elderly parents, a chance to help themselves. Understand? Okay? Now, like I said, I'm from Salem, I live a couple blocks from the dispensary. You wouldn't even know the dispensary is there, other than you're a medical patient and that's where you go. Other than that, you wouldn't even know it's there. There's, crime has not elevated. Crime has decreased. But you know what keeps going? It's the heroin and the opiates. That's what's out there, and that should be your main concern. Okay? There are a lot of people that could use cannabis and get off their opiates, get off the heroin. Okay? And find something that actually works. When I first got into smoking pot, it wasn't cool, or you had to hide. Okay? 'Cause why? 'Cause it smelled. Oh, but you go to another party, everybody's drinking, and everybody's reaching in for a handful of pills to stuff in their mouth. You get all messed up. Why? It doesn't smell. I got this out of my parents' cabinet, or my grandmother's cabinet. How easy is that? Okay? And don't come to me with your, oh, heroin addicts use pot first. I'm sure they either had a glass of water that day, even a glass of milk. Okay? Maybe even some toast, had a couple of eggs. All right? People have food disorders, stuff like that. Okay? You gotta think outside the box here, people. Okay? This is, a law has been passed in Massachusetts to help people. Okay? This isn't to make big businesses. Okay? If you notice, a lot of big businesses got involved in this to make money. But guess what? They're hurting. And that's why they're coming up here to open up, 'cause there's patients out there that can't get access to what they need. 'Cause the dispensaries all around that are open, what, six, maybe seven, can't keep up with the patient. Okay? This isn't about a pot store coming in. All right? Talk to your children. That's where it begins, at home. Okay? Don't be blaming the guy that wants to open the pot store down the street.
Right.
Beginning at home.
Hello?
And that's where it begins.
I wanna cut your shot a little bit there. As long as you get your points out, that's great.
And that's my point. And I'm, and another concern, I'm sorry, is the people that are smoking and driving, you worried about that? If you don't think that's not happening now, you got issues. 'Cause I'm sure it is happening now. Okay? There are people out there drinking and driving that still get away with it. Okay? There are field sobriety tests. If you are impaired, that should show, right? You don't need to go develop all this stuff. Let these people get out there and give them a chance. Find out what's going on. Do your research. Check out masscan.org and do the research. I have, we put bills up there to keep this going. This is about, this is for the people and what the people have decided.
All right, I'm gonna cut you off at this point, 'cause I'll give you enough time. Thank you.
That's fine. Thank you very much.
Yeah. All right. Go ahead.
Hi. I'm not a public speaker, I'm a little nervous. Excuse me.
I was too.
I know, but I don't have to talk to a big group. Anyway, my name is Kathy Franson. I live at seven oh one Salem Street. And I have a couple of concerns. One is, I'm actually a property manager in Salem, and I have people coming to me all the time asking me for office space because they're next to a medical marijuana doctor. And I have actually gotten calls from tenants who are close to the dispensary, who are looking to flee, begging me, do you have space? So, I'll just say that. But the other concern I have is, if it were legal, why can't we do it in a regular pharmacy? That's what pharmacies are set up for, there's a whole structure for it. Why does it need to be separate? And if it, if it were just like the regular drugs, then it should be in the dispensary, in the regular pharmacy. And that's all I gotta say. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else wanna speak on or against? Any more public comment?
I just have a question.
All right, gotta come up to this point and give your name.
I have to go down.
Yeah, well, that's the, that's the format.
It might be a stupid question, but I have a question.
No question is stupid.
The one you don't ask.
That's right. I've been listening to all this. My name's David Caponegrill, two seventy-one School Street. My wife has a cousin that she's on marijuana, but it's a pill. Why do you have to smoke? Why do you have to have a dispensary putting the weed out when you can take a pill, and like she said, go to the pharmacy and get it? That is my question. So, if you can answer that, if you can answer that, you're still getting the same effect.
Not really.
Uh, no? She's, she's doing very well on it.
That's good.
All right, everybody's different.
That doesn't help everybody. It may help.
All right, it's everybody's different, right.
I'm not gonna have this go back and forth.
Yeah, right, right. But that was my question, you know, why have all that smoking?
I'm gonna ask the people in the audience, keep it down like I said, and do not lash out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wants to speak? Hold on a sec, I'll let you speak. Anyone else wanna speak on or against? Go ahead.
Good evening. I'm Jeff Gillen, the deputy chief. I'm soon to be the, your next chief here in town. And you're asking if anybody wants to speak for or against, and I'm not here to, to make that determination due to my position. and I'm not here to, to make that determination, due to my position, my job, my oath of office is to protect and serve everyone, all the residents of Groveland, and if you know me, my whole adult life career has been dedicated to, um, law enforcement, um, so, I certainly do have opinions, and if you look how I'm dressed, you could probably maybe take a guess at what I think about marijuana, and yes, it does stink, by the way, but, that's a separate note, um, but I do respect both sides, and there are two sides here, and I think it's so important, especially as the chief, that I don't take a side as far as, um, being against one side or the other, because I may have to deal with them, and it's really important, um, for the police to always be impartial and, and not to discriminate against anyone, so, I will speak about my concerns, though, um, and that is public safety, traffic, the quality of life issues for Groveland, it's something I think about every day, and I always have, um, Groveland certainly is one of the best towns around, and I hate to see that affected by something that really is upsetting a lot of people here, I can see, um, so, I would ask that me, and the police department, that we have some say in this, how it goes down, as far as traffic, where it is, access, security, um, are we gonna get more officers to maybe address some of these concerns? You know, most often, we only have two officers on the street, and if we have an incident, we might have one or zero, we might not have an officer on, on the streets in Groveland for many hours, so, that would leave that unprotected, that area, um, so, I'm not saying that we wanna work with the, the town, the board, the residents, if this is something you all decide, um, again, I'll keep that oath of office, and I'll protect and serve everyone, and, and that's really what I'm supposed to do, and that's what I do do, um, there are concerns about the drug recognition experts, which, uh, you mentioned, that, that is true, that's a very, very expensive, uh, training, and there's only a few in the state, I just got a list, um, a couple days ago, or, or last week, of some in the area, um, not every town has DREs, um, so, that's going through the, the courts right now, about how do you deal with people that are impaired, it's, uh, it's not easy, as you may think, with, compared to like alcohol, which you can smell, and any layperson can really tell when somebody's drunk, this is different, this is, um, a, a much different level of, um, impairment, and it's, the courts don't always accept it, it's, um, they're wanting it to be experts, they wouldn't even call a police officer like me that's been on the job forever, um, an expert, any more than a layperson, they want you to be a DRE, so, there, there are some concerns, and, um, I would take some questions if anybody has something, uh, but...
Well, you, um, you answered one of mine, was the part, I was gonna ask you a couple later, um, about the impaired part, because I've done a little bit of research on this myself, and, and there was no, and there's nothing really out there, they, they talk about you guys finding someone impaired, other than the red eyes, or something like that, or smell, but, you, you, I mean, you don't, your department is not seeing, at this point in time, like you're, you're completely up to snuff on this, as far as the, the state federal laws, or, you know, you're in the process still, am I correct when I say that?
Yeah, the, um, the appeals court, they're still going through this, there's gonna be case law that comes out of, um, actions that's taken place most recently with the, um, effects of marijuana and somebody being impaired, that, that's gonna be, yet to be determined, so, um, and with it being a civil, uh, fine now, um, if you're smoking in a car, et cetera, you, it's not like the old days, that was probable cause, just because you could smell marijuana, you know, now, you can smell it, and you still don't have a rate to stop people and, and search their vehicles, so, there's a lot of restrictions on, on the police, again, the voters spoke pretty loud and clear what they wanted, so, uh, the police don't make the laws, as I always say, we enforce them, so, we, we will certainly do what we can, but we are restricted.
Okay, I know that it was a couple hands to ask you questions, um, I got one hand front, you wanted to ask, go ahead.
Legal wise, is it illegal because of the federal laws, or is it illegal, uh, like, when we look at an undocumented person, he's really an illegal alien, but we call him undocumented? Where is Groveland law or Massachusetts law right now?
Well, I think a lot of people touched on it tonight, it is a scheduled one, it's a, it's a federal violation, it's a controlled substance, um, so, police officers certainly can't smoke marijuana and carry our guns, if it's, it's a controlled substance violation under the federal law.
Should they be arrested if they have it, or sell it?
That's above Groveland and Massachusetts, the, the legislature, the, the voters have approved it, I still think the feds can come in any time and maybe take over and shut down an operation or...
So would be acting like a sanctuary city by allowing it?
Well, statewide, yeah.
I think that's ridiculous.
But there was a point...
Totally ridiculous.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And it should go to a town vote before this order proves this.
Okay, go ahead.
For the deputy chief question, uh, Joe DeMore, my charity lane, um, if the permit was issued, it's very narrowly defined, it's for chemotherapy patients and pain patients and, um, you know, just very narrowly defined, and you don't expand it to retailing anything else, or any other type of service, is it automatic, in your estimation, that you're gonna need more police?
No.
Anyone else? Go ahead.
Is it true, though, if someone does, does get permission to have a dispensary, that they also get retail permission?
That's part of the Department of Public Health, I don't know...
Yeah, right, he wouldn't be able to answer that.
Regulations, but, I think that may be true, yes.
Yeah, after, save that for one of your notes.
Um, anyone else? Go ahead.
How much time does it actually take, uh, law enforcement's, uh, daily duties to prosecute, go after, and deal with nonviolent marijuana criminals, criminal rapists?
How often, how much time do we spend?
How much time does the department spend going after nonviolent criminals, nonviolent marijuana-using criminals?
Probably none.
None?
Like, you're saying, like, we're out looking for people smoking marijuana?
Or filing the paperwork, or finding them, just haphazardly arresting them, how much money are we spending keeping them locked up?
It could change, the early, an officer wrote a citation yesterday for somebody smoking marijuana in their car, that was yesterday, I think that was the first one that we've had, so, it's hard to give you an answer, it's, it's not a, a set amount each day that we, uh, deal with people with marijuana.
But it sounds like you're not actually using, you're not actually spending time going after marijuana users.
We don't go after anybody, I don't know what that means.
Well, you know what I mean?
No, I don't.
You're not having to deal with marijuana issues, you're not, doesn't sound like you're spending a lot of time on it.
No.
That's it.
Yes.
Okay, hold on, let, let me be here, in, in the back of the room?
How much time and effort officer hours are spent in, in, um, patrolling and finding traffic violations and safety issues and things, along that stretch of ninety-seven each day?
The routine patrol for an officer is eight hours, except for a break, or again, there's times they may be tied up on arrest, or an investigation, and then that can be cut down to half, or, they could be...
But I mean, isn't it true that that, that stretch of road is, sees a, sees a lot of police, um, work?
Yes.
Police incidents?
Yes.
In terms of tra- traffic violations and safety?
Yes, yes.
Anyone else, in the back of the room?
Richard Howes, ten mile an hour, Groveland, Mass, um, somebody brought up about how much time you proactively spend, uh, going after people, um, so, is it, um, safe to say that you're in a reactionary period, so that you have to wait until somebody's driving all over the roads to pick them up? So like, if somebody was smoking pot, they're waiting past the, the lines?
That would be reactionary.
That's when you go after them, right?
Yes, you'd have to have a reason, reasonable suspicion to stop a car.
Right, so, so, so they're creating a hazard on the road already, before you start to go after them, correct?
Yes, you would need a reasonable suspicion to stop any vehicle.
Okay, so it's not a proactive thing that you're looking for trouble, you have to go after the people, once they've started being impaired?
Correct, just like with alcohol, unless you do a road walk, and then you'd be proactive, yes, a reactionary.
Anybody else? Go ahead.
But going back to, there's no mechanism right now, so without a drug recognition expert, the police department cannot cite somebody for marijuana impairment.
Right.
So it's a very important thing to remember, is that they don't have jurisdiction to be able to do that without having a drug recognition expert.
Well, that's, we could still, we can still make arrests on, on our probable cause, an officer can make some determinations, but it's, it's tough to win those cases without being considered an expert, but, if we, we've had arrests with people that are under the influence of, um, prescription pills, and sometimes it's real obvious, and there are, you know, sobriety tests that they can give, but, you're gonna see these cases probably lost more than one, until it's determined in the court system, and that's when we're gonna wait for the case law to come out, so...
Uh, I personally love this, it's like a, like a chief's log test, that, like, you could inform brain within sobriety tests, I think it just started, you know, have you heard anything about that?
I've heard that anything like that is gonna be years away, before you'll find some type of test that would determine the, the level of intoxication from, from marijuana, I mean, I could be wrong, but that's what I was told anyways, that it's, there's nothing in place right now.
Okay, any last? I'll get enough, though.
One more question.
Sure.
These type of clinics, they bring in lots of cash, uh, but being illegal, they can't deposit in banks, is my understanding, with police having issue with a large storage of money being at this location, could possibly bring in some other elements that we, uh, I mean, uh, they can't deposit it in a bank.
No, absolutely, that's a great point, I, I have heard that, um, that would go under, um, the security and concerns of...
But also, in fact, you guys will...
Yeah, that's, that's my concern, um, you know, this could still be a target for all kinds of different types of activity, um, it could be just a, an attraction to people that may wanna do something wrong.
No?
Hi, chief, a couple quick questions.
Yes, sir.
Do you, in your estimation, believe that this would cause an undue stress in your current resources?
Not the way it's being proposed at this time, I, my concern would be if it became recreational, I think that would be a whole different category that we'd have to talk a whole nother night about, but, um, I do hear that these facilities are very well secured, um, better than most banks and CBSs, so, um, I, I don't have any known concerns, I just, in, in my profession, these are things I would worry about, and I'd wanna know, and I'd like to be a part of that, that, you know, the neighborhood's safe, the quality of life of the people around there is, is well preserved.
I think any, any, any discussion would, would absolutely have to include you, um, to have your expert opinion, now, one more question, would you be any more qualified to distinguish an impaired driver that bought, uh, from a dispensary in Groveland, as opposed to buy from a dispensary in Georgetown, or Haverhill, or Byfield, or West Newbury, or Merrimack, or anywhere else in the state for that matter?
No.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Bill, can I have a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, Chief Gillen, um, would be, uh, a positive aspect to this, that we were able to write into the negotiation, that part of the, the contract would be to include that drug recognition education?
That would be wonderful, yes.
Right, I mean, because it's expensive, I understand that, it's, it's limited, um, the resources are limited, uh, the locations are limited, uh, the time slots are limited, the cost is limiting, but if we're able to write that into any part of the negotiation process, I figured that would go a long way, not only, um, the town of Grove...
I think he's gone, Denise.
You froze a bit, Mr. S- Mr. Wood.
I'm sorry, I was just going, I was just making another point on the drug recognition education program, that it'd be beneficial, uh, not only to the town of Groveland, but some of the other police officers in the surrounding areas, if, if it was passed.
Yes.
Okay, one second, I'll call you chief, deputy chief, chief, whatever, I'm used to calling you, I'm used to calling you Jeff, but anyway...
That's fine.
And I'm not, I'm just asking questions, 'cause, uh, I've got a lot of people, as a chairman, asking this question, in Groveland, is a, is a resident allowed to have one ounce of marijuana on them, and I know, I don't know if it's smoking, I don't know if it's oil, I don't know what it is, but, is that true?
Yes.
Okay, so they're allowed to have one ounce on them, all right? And is, the average homeowner in Groveland, um, as you, and if you don't know, uh, six plants they were able to grow in their house?
Yes.
So that, so you guys cannot arrest them for six plants in their house?
Correct.
Okay, so, have you had any kind of, um, problems from homeowners, or anything with this situation, with the one ounce or the home grown, have you had any situations so far?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, anyone else? I saw some hands, um, I'll let this gentleman talk.
So, uh, just to follow up on, uh, Mr. Dunn, this law has only been allowing people, residents, to have marijuana in their homes for two or three months, so, it's a little probably to say what the impact would be to any homeowner, either growing or having possession of.
Yeah, I think time's gonna tell, I mean, if you read the Colorado report, you'd, you'd, um, have an eye-opening experience with that, I mean, it's, there is a lot of other issues related to this, but it's all new, it's, it's new for me, and it's, it's, it's new for all of us here.
Okay, go ahead.
So you had mentioned that you don't think that it, based on what you know, impacted your resources, but I guess my question is, have you researched any other town that's gone through this process, to find out how it's impacted them?
Again, it's too new, and what I've heard...
But in even other states?
Just the, uh, Colorado report, I read that, and that impacted them, I would say, from, from a law enforcement point of view, um, you know, pretty negatively, a lot of increase in, in issues with marijuana, driving, and hospital visits, and pets eating edibles...
Can I just clarify that, when you refer to that report, you are referring to recreational and not medical use?
Yes.
Okay, anyone else wanna speak? Go ahead.
Just wanted to say, I, I didn't hear one single person in here this evening oppose medical marijuana, in fact, my opening statement was my approval of it, and my support for it, so, I'm always looking for bottom line, and what's really simple, keep it simple, and what's simple is, eight minutes away from us, is a dispensary in Georgetown, and I say no for Groveland, it's really that simple.
Thank you. All right. Hold on, I got one behind you here, I know what you do next.
Yes, sir.
Do you agree or disagree that most young kids that are breaking into cars, and sometimes homes, are doing it to buy pot? Because I've known an awful lot of them, awful lot of kids, that ransack cars regularly, bust the side windows, take it all, just to go buy pot.
In my experience, I can't say specifically marijuana, but I could say that, yeah, you're right, as far as drugs, um, heroin and some other more serious drugs, we just had an incident where we got, uh, three individuals, and I believe that was all drug-related, and they were breaking into cars, so...
You know, a lot of high school age kids that started robbing cars for pot.
Right.
I'm not a pot smoker, never was, but I know an awful lot of them.
Thank you, I'm gonna have to, go ahead.
Yes, sir.
Um, chief, um, thank you for a lot of the insight, um, just one quick question, is it fair to say that, you know, as one of the gentlemen mentioned, there's gonna be dispensary that's down the road in, uh, Georgetown, and let people from Haverhill go there, let people from here go there, meaning that, that traffic is still going to come through your town, you're still going to have to deal with it, if you have support from Georgetown and you have support from Haverhill?
Already the benefits, yes, I would, yes.
Well, Merrimack's also getting to...
Yeah, Merrimack, and, there's, there's a few going around, so you're right, there's, they're gonna drive to Groveland, that's one of the pros, that you would probably have some control and benefits, um, if it were here, if we had the right resources to, to keep the community as a whole, and not go backwards with safety and security and quality of life issues, so, um, that's, that's another consideration, and I'm glad I'm not sitting on that side of the table, because those are things that come up, you know, so...
Okay, go ahead.
Do you think it's fair to say that if a dispensary did open in Groveland, you would be able to, the local businesses in the area would see more traffic of people coming to Groveland instead of going to Georgetown?
I would assume so, yes.
So local business owners stand to profit from that?
I don't think that would be a fair question to ask the chief, I think we should ask it to, to these guys. All right, okay, all right, okay, all right, thank you, thank you, anyone else want to ask the chief any more questions, and I'm gonna shut it down, go ahead.
I just wanted to ask if it's possible to find out where each of the board members stand on this preliminarily.
Okay, well, at this point in time, I'm not willing to do that, I wanna hear, me, I'm not gonna speak on behalf of these guys, they can open their mouth, me, I want all, everything in front of me, I wanna hear it, and I have been dazed hearing from people in the town of Groveland about this, I am so, had enough phone calls, and enough in my head, um, you know, I've been stressed out over it, I'm trying to hear what the town has, I'm trying to be fair, I'm trying to get the hearing going and what have you, and then I'll go from there, I don't know if any other board member at this point in time wants to open their mouth on behalf?
I like opening my mouth.
All right, um, let me just finish up with the, go ahead, but I mean, you're gonna wanna, hold on, in, in fairness, you're gonna wanna be able to have your own statement and speak for a bit on it.
I speak for myself.
I'm just saying, you, you do you wanna speak, but I mean, I wanna try and open up to the board at one point, what do you guys have your fears?
Whenever you wanna do that, you can do that.
Whenever you wanna do that, you can do that procedure.
Alright, I will, I will, I will do it.
But I think it's a fair statement, uh, uh, or a request that they ask where we stand on this and why.
And I agree.
And why.
And I, and I will get to that point, if you wanna do, do it now, or the board wants to do it now, I'm still taking comments to the Chief.
If you're not done with Paul O'Conne, please.
Okay, so we have.
I have a question for the board, I appreciate the gentleman bringing this up in terms of what you folks think. Here's my question, is there a local option in the permit process that will allow the, the town to impose restrictive covenants as to how narrow that permit would be?
Okay, thank you. Uh, is anyone else standing here for the Chief? All set, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Well, I, I, I'm gonna, at this point, shut it down.
One more thing.
Alright, one more thing.
In closing, I just wanna say that, uh, after the election, the presidential election, I had to go on the computer to find out that in the town of Groveland, there was a hundred and something more people that voted for Donald Trump because we believe in getting the laws that we have on the books enforced. Groveland, Salisbury, and I can't remember, Boxton or Rowley, we stand up in Groveland. We stand up for enforcing laws. Keep that in mind, please.
Thank you. Um, I'm gonna either, like, you guys have a rebuttal at this point, or the board can start with their. Alright, this is gonna be it, go ahead. No, you, you have pros or, pro or against, you gotta comment on the Chief, or?
No, it, it's not a please question.
You have to go to the podium, give your name.
It's, it's really just questions. Um, my name is Nancy Webster, I live on King Street, sixty-nine King Street. And when this whole issue came up, I got in touch with my friend who lives in Colorado. She is a, a psychiatrist, her husband's a pharmacologist, and I, I see both sides. And I'm so glad to hear that people are benefiting from the medical marijuana. I guess I would like to understand what the process is, so if someone needs this, they would see a physician, the physician would say, I, we, we feel that this can, can help you, so then they give a prescription, and then they would go to you and get it filled in some manner, a pill form, or smoking, or a gummy worm, or whatever like that, something like that. I guess my question is, who is, so we have the physician, and then we have the folks that are, are filling this. So essentially, these are like pharmacists, so are they tweaking it? Is the physician tweaking it? Is the people who are developing tweaking it? What kind of science is behind this? Because, um, there are people who are cannabis scientists, and this is what they do. And there are incidents of people who have anxiety disorders who take this, and then they end up with panic attacks. And there are things that happen, because it's not, as, it's new, right? It's not as regulated. So how do we, if this were to go forward, how do we make sure that this is being regulated by science? And that there are protocols in place to make sure that people are given proper dosage, and it can be tweaked and changed? Um, and, and patients are monitored effectively, because I think, honestly, we just don't know. Um, there are benefits and there were, things will happen, we don't know yet, so that's my question, I'd like to understand the process.
Alright, well hopefully we'll get that answered, I don't know if you guys can answer, but I think that would be part of you guys to answer, thank you. Alright, so does the board wanna turn around and hear the rebuttals from can- the cannabis, or do you guys wanna put your weigh-in at this point?
I'd like to hear the rebuttal.
I'd like to hear, uh, the responses to some of the concerns and questions that may lead to more questions on our behalf.
Right.
But that's just me.
I agree with, I agree with those.
I agree.
You wanna hear more, Mike?
I wanna hear the rebuttal, yes.
Okay.
Could we have a five-minute recess?
Sure, five-minute recess, sure, okay. Hello? Take your seats, please. Make sure everybody's in the room. I'm having them open the doors, 'cause it was getting hot in here, people were coming in. Where'd Bill go?
He's on the hallway.
Just waiting for the other one select one here. Is, um, is Billow in the hall? Is Mohammed? Alright, so we're gonna go ahead and continue on, and we're gonna go ahead and let the rebuttal come from the, um, elevated access.
So I'm gonna address as many concerns as I can, and then open it up to, um, to my colleagues as well, um, as needed, or if they can chime in, 'cause I am just a mom. Um, but regarding the whole gateway theory, we are again talking about teenagers that are imbibing in a recreational sense. We are a medical facility, we do not have a recreational application filed, we have a medical application filed because our intention is to serve sick patients, um.
Excuse me, can we ask questions while you're talking, or?
Uh, I'm gonna let them go, and then we'll take the questions, he's gonna, I don't know, try to remember. I mean, I think.
I, I know that everybody wants to know if our intention is to be recreational down the line. We do not have that intention. I would say five years from now, if there is no stigma, um, and the town decides they want it, that the same way they would ask us not to open recreational, we would ask them to give us first choice. Um, i- if, if that becomes something that the town decides that they want, as, as, uh, as things change. Um, as far as how to regulate and monitor the compliance, the DPH conducts regular visits, um, to monitor compliance. So it, it, that, that burden falls on the Department of Public Health, not on town resources. Um, affecting water supply, you are a well-watered town, um, we will use recirculating water, we'll collect rainwater. Our intention is to be as green as possible. Um, and safeguards, safeguards, I know somebody mentioned closed-circuit TVs, but the, the facility will be staffed by a team of security professionals, people at all times, twenty-four hours. Why so close to Georgetown? I can tell you from personal experience that supply far, or demand far outweighs supplies right now. Um, I know that there are times that you can go to a dispensary and they have nothing that you need in stock. Um, and I can't even tell you, the panic that you feel thinking that this medicine that your child needs isn't there, and you have to drive to Braintree, or to Boston, or all the way out to Pittsfield when that one opens. Um, so that, that's why Georgetown isn't enough right now. Um, none, the ones that are open just aren't enough to serve all of the patients that are in need right now. Our Department of Public Health application and Rob's, um, business experience and why that's relevant. Somebody mentioned smell, that's why HVAC is relevant. His HVAC background and owning an HVAC business is truly going to help us develop a system so that smell doesn't impact. I can tell you that I have been inside and outside of the Georgetown dispensary, and you don't smell anything, not even in the lobby of the dispensary, and they are growing. Retail, uh, the, the, I'm sorry, I was confused as well by your language as far as retail is, is dispensary. Um, recreational would be a separate licensing and application process. As far as we know, those, those regulations haven't even been developed, so we aren't even in consideration for that. There was some speculation that, um, that RMDs permitted before a certain date would have, be grandfathered into recreational. It wouldn't apply to us regardless. Um, again, we are, our application, our license is solely for medical. Uh, people impaired and driving through town, um, somebody else mentioned Haverhill, that our intention to locate in Groveland was to attract Haverhill residents. Um, it wasn't, but if, and you said they could go to Georgetown anyway, but what road are they traveling between Haverhill and Georgetown? Because I, I'm pretty sure that's ninety-seven, right along that, so if we're worried about impairment, um, that, that burden is still placed on your town, is already placed on your town. Yeah. Oh, um, the dispensary versus prescription, why do you have to go to a dispensary and not just get a prescription? Um, and somebody said that, uh, somebody that they knew took a pill that, that is available at the pharmacy. Um, the pill that's available is actually a synthetic form of THC. So THC is one molecule that's found in cannabis, there are actually over ninety identified. And so when a patient sees a doctor, um, for whatever debilitating condition they have, um, the doctor determines, I know this addresses process a little bit too, determines if their condition is chronic and debilitating, and whether or not their ability to use cannabis, um, the benefits would outright, outweigh the risk. So that's a physician's requirement. THC, so the, the synthetic form that you can get in a pharmacy is THC only. Um, what you can get in a dispensary, a patient would have to consult with their doctor, because there is a lot more naturally occurring in the plant than just THC. My daughter takes a, um, a form of cannabis called CBD or cannabidiol, which actually can't even make you high. There is no psychoactive effect to it. Um, so I think it's just really important that we dispel a little bit of the myths and that people are taking cannabis just to get high. There actually is cannabis that doesn't impair you at all. Cash and banking issues, there actually are banks in Massachusetts accepting RMD businesses. So the amount of cash on hand would be far less than a grocery store, same as a retail, any kind of retail store in the mall. Um, regular daily deposits would be made, um, we do have commitments to work with banks. I think, I've, resources for the police department, we absolutely agree that that would be a great benefit. Um, and would be, we'd be willing to work that into our contract negotiations, absolutely. Yeah, yep, education, yep.
That's education, but not an expert.
Well, if you, if, if the, if the police officer, they were asking about, uh, Mr. Wood was asking about, um, whether or not we would fund the police officer to go to the drug, um, recognition training to become an expert, thank you. We absolutely would, would be willing to negotiate that into our host agreement contract.
You, is that what you have, not, just you?
Yeah, no, that's fine.
No, no, so stay there, 'cause I'm gonna, stay there, I'm gonna let the people ask some quick questions.
Okay, and. Why don't you come stand with them?
I just thought, well, she did her piece, that the people can ask questions of what you talked about.
That's fine.
Okay, anyone have questions for her? Go ahead, one at a time, you just ask first.
Um, I had a question when you were talking about Rob's experience in HVAC being important to control the smells and emissions, but it kinda contradicted what you said in terms of your own test, uh, your own statement that it does not, uh, smell. So I'm curious to how it affects what he does versus not having a need.
I think that in general, the, um, the Department of Public Health has regulated the Massachusetts program much more heavily than any other state. So I think in general, their regulations to control smell, um, and, and really to control all of it, to control access and make sure it's really just patients, um, that are, deserve it, and get it, um, I think was done really well. So I don't think that smell is an issue, um, surrounding any of the, um, RMDs that are open. I actually have been to the Salem location, I've been to Braintree as well, and not ever noticed a smell in the lobby.
Okay, next, I saw some hands, go ahead.
So, so just to, uh, follow on to my other question, so, I'm just trying to understand, so for your daughter as an example, there, there are any number of elements to this?
Yes.
So who made that determination that that specific pill was right for her?
Our doctor guides us.
Your doctor, okay.
So we actually have to see, as a pediatric patient, we have to see two physicians, and one of them has to be a pediatrician or pediatric specialist. So our doctor tells us, um, what we look for, and, you know, we have, it is a lot of trial and error. It absolutely is, I won't deny that. Um, finding exactly what was our right fit took a while, but it was constantly working with the doctor. So the Department of Public Health does require an ongoing relationship with your doctor. Most of, um, you know, so most patients would be able to continue to utilize their own doctor, or if they wanna see a doctor that specializes in medical marijuana, the minimum that they have to see that pa- that, um, doctor is generally every three months. So determinations between doctor and patient would still be made together.
Understand too, these ailments that we're talking about, if you're talking regular pharmaceuticals, you're talking a lot of trial and error as well. I have a good friend who has a six-year-old autistic son, and has severe anxiety, and they've tried multiple pharmaceutical medications, none of them worked. To the point where her doctor says to her, "I think I'm gonna try him on OxyContin next," and she said, "Like hell you are." And that's what pharmaceutical doctors are doing, they're throwing stuff at the wall to see what sticks. And you wanna talk about the reason the FDA has not approved this yet, and there's one reason and one reason only, and that's because of Big Pharma. They can sit there and they can tell you all day long that this has no medicinal value, but I got news for you. If it had no medicinal value, they wouldn't be making a synthetic version of it. So, understand that when you look at it as some sort of trial and error thing, that's exactly what's going on with pharmaceuticals as well.
And I think science supports, um, the advancement of, you know, just learning more. So GW Pharmaceuticals is a pharmaceutical company out of the UK. They're actually running a study here in Massachusetts on children's epilepsy and forms of cannabis. Um, there's a genetics company here in Massachusetts that's running a genetic study to see how, um, certain genetic markers might affect your response to cannabis. There's Dr. Sue Sicily, um, is running a study on PTSD in veterans. So there is science backing up what anecdotally we know, and eventually when we get enough anecdotal evidence, we actually drop the word anecdotal and just call it evidence.
So is there a physician-level person, someone who's acting like, I'm sorry, not physician, a pharmacist? Is there someone who knows ins and outs of all of these elements, and like the best way to compound outside of Hill? Is there some facility that functions like that?
So.
So people go and see their individual doctor, and they work with them, and then they're given a recommendation to go and get their medicine from which, you know, RMD they choose to go and choose it from. And then from there, we have pe- people that are educated and that can guide people in certain directions. By law, we cannot give a diagnosis, we cannot say this will work for you. All we can do is give recommendations based on our knowledge, our education, and what has worked for other people. And it's much like a, a doctor, if you walked into your doctor tomorrow and you told him you, you're suffering from anxiety, I guarantee you nine out of ten doctors are gonna throw Xanax at you and throw you out the door. Right? And Xanax is something that is more highly addictive, benzoids are more highly addictive than even opiates. You could die from withdrawals on benzoids, but that's your choice. You know, we're talking about a plant that occurs naturally in nature, um, and that's why it works so well with the bo- so well with the body.
And we're talking too a lot about the federal illegality, but I would like to point out that Massachusetts passed this law for medical use over four years ago, and did pass the recreational use law. Um, again, we're not interested in recreational, but I think it's important to show that this has been, um, developing for the last four years.
I think it's important to note too, on that recreational note, is I've heard a lot of things about the Colorado Rocky Report and everything coming out of Colorado, and for some reason, the entire world focuses on Colorado, right? Colorado legalized medicinal in two thousand twelve. They get notoriety because they were the first state to go full recreational. And a lot of the data that comes out of Colorado, and a lot of the notoriety is because they are in the center here, surrounded by all illegal states, and all of a sudden, any of that illegal activity is the people pouring over the border into that state. California's been operating under Prop two fifteen since nineteen ninety-six. And they operate out there legally, happy as heck, patients are getting what they need. Washington State, did you hear anything about Washington State at all? No, because Washington State had a great medical program, they eased into the recreational program to the point where they abolished medical because it was all working so well. So state to state, the regulations, and Massachusetts has the strictest regulations in the country. So, when you're looking into this stuff and you're doing your research, I urge you to really delineate between what, what is recreational and what is medicinal. In Massachusetts, the states surrounding you, New Hampshire, Connecticut, they all have legal medical programs.
Maine, Rhode Island.
Maine, Rhode Island, you don't have people from the states around us pouring over the borders trying to grab a Massachusetts. a Massachusetts medical card. You know, as a matter of fact, if you're a Massachusetts resident, you can get your Massachusetts medical card, you can get your Maine medical card. You can travel to Maine because the prices might be better. And New Hampshire allows you to transport through the state of New Hampshire as long as you hold a medical card in both states. So the states are working together as far as that goes. The federal government tried to step in out in California because most of it was cash grabs. And the Supreme Court issued a ruling just not too long ago in Arizona that you cannot interfere in state law. The state has voted for something, and gentleman over here mentioned earlier about, you know, over a hundred people voted for Trump in this room. Well, by more than a thousand people, your town voted for recreational marijuana in the state of Massachusetts.
Go ahead.
He's saying by more than a hundred.
Okay. Please don't speak out.
Right.
Okay.
Well, he's incorrect.
Okay.
So, um, what, to, to this gentleman's, well, this is, Mr. Hodges' point, which I absolutely agree with, keeping it simple. What I'm not hearing is, and there's more to this, if you'll just let me... What I'm not hearing though is, why Groveland? I don't, I, I hear almost nobody or very, very few people saying that they don't believe that it does certainly help somebody a lot, and that's, and that's worth it. But we are a, we are a town of sixty-five hundred people. So the first question I wanna ask, and then I follow up, please, is what percentage of the general population needs a prescription of medical marijuana?
Or percentage of the population?
Yeah, one percent, two percent? How many people, how many people are you gonna have in this sixty-five hundred person town who absolutely need to be served right here, right now? We have one in Georgetown. My second piece is, why people refuse it? Could you please, uh, I'm, I'm hearing Pittsfield, I'm hearing Salem, I'm hearing Braintree. I understand Georgetown needs to maybe are anomalies, but I'm hearing big cities. Why this little town of sixty-five hundred people where we have less than eight miles away?
Understand this wouldn't...
Big minutes, I'm sorry.
Understand, this wouldn't be our only location. So that when you go for the per...
But that doesn't mean it's why Georgetown?
Uh, if you allow me to speak, I'm getting to that. This wouldn't be our only location. We were going for three locations, right? And strategically, we wanted to be placed in a larger city, and we wanted to be able to service a small town too. And here, here's the reason, and this goes to another note where this man is an HVAC background, doesn't have any marijuana background. The place is opening up everywhere else. Those are all outside companies coming in from Colorado, coming in from the other states, claiming they have experience. Well, guess what? They're coming in to take the Massachusetts dollars, and they're coming in to profit. So Rob has more of a philosophical approach to this.
Philanthropic.
He, he's a, he's a cancer survivor. He wants to cater to patients in the best way possible. He's outlined a program which will give huge discounts to veterans. And the best way to do that is to operate in a smaller town where the overhead is less and we can pass those discounts on to the patients. For example, NIDA, which is the largest one in the state right now, they're operating out of Franklin, um, Cambridge, I believe, whatever. They offer, you'll love this one, they offer a seventy-five percent discount to their employees on product. They won't even give a dollar off to a veteran.
That doesn't, uh, also respect, I'm not hearing why Georgetown, it's awesome program.
Like I, like, 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 like I said, we want it, we want one of our locations to be in a smaller town, not in the doldrums of the city where, you know, we're getting squeezed for every dollar.
The cost of operating in a smaller town in the North Shore on the outskirts of the city is less than opening in a, in a big city. And I can tell you from going to the dispensaries that are currently operating that they can't serve all the patients they have. So I wouldn't expect when Georgetown opens and they have traffic from ninety-five hitting them, um, from all directions, that they're going to be able to serve local patients to, to the extent that they need it either.
Operating in, in Groveland, in short, would allow us to pass those discounts on to patients.
Can I, can I, um, she asked part of her question that, that I was gonna ask anyway. She asked, um, we have X amount of people in Groveland. How many people in Groveland actually need cannabis? Do you know what the percentage is offhand?
No, we wouldn't, that would be a violation of HIPAA for us to know.
No, if I'm in the medical field, you can give a general, you can give a general profile. According to statistics, of what percentage of people...
I can, oh, the only public information we have is that there are thirty-five thousand plus people in the state of Massachusetts with their medical card. It does not break it down by region, and it does not give us personal, people wanna remain, remain anonymous.
Thirty-five thousand people divided by the population, I mean, divided by the number of towns. It's, the point is this very, very few statistically Groveland residents that have won a benefit in this small town.
Yeah, but, and, and it's, and it's, and it's, and it's growing there, and it's growing there, right?
And what's turned out in Haverhill? I had also asked that question, I think, I think that would be...
We weren't involved in that process.
We weren't involved in that process.
Oh, you guys didn't do any research?
No, no, watch it, turn it on.
Listen, some of the other towns that were turned down...
All right. Hey, listen, everyone's gotta calm down. Calm down.
No, everyone doesn't have to calm down.
No, no, I don't want people yelling out. I wanna keep order in the room.
I can't tell you specifically Haverhill, but I can tell you there was one that was gonna go in in Bedford. And when those people submitted their application, they found out the gentleman that submitted the application was also illegally extracting money out to his brother-in-law's company as a contractor. There are people doing shady things, so their proposals get rejected. It's not just because the town doesn't necessarily want it. So there are different reasons town to town.
But you don't know, I'm asking you honestly, you don't know the reason it was turned down in...
I, I can tell you that I read an article, and, and I'm not, I'm not pro con here, I read an article that there was something to do between the mayor of Haverhill and one of his constituent, his, his, his selectmen over there, whatever it was, it was being pushed through, it was politically...
He signed it by mistake.
Something was wrong, and there was some arguing going back and forth between the city officials and the, the people that, whatever the name of that company, or in Georgetown, they said, "Forget it, we're outta here, we're going to Georgetown."
The council said he was misled, he was attracted to the second...
Right, right, right.
I'm hearing, my point is, I'm hearing as I said, Haverhill, in Bedford, these are all people where you're gonna have a larger population, I understand statistically, large population of people, large need. I just, once again, I, I don't, I think literally if you're getting the jury still out on how this will all run legally and, 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 so again, in terms of enforcement, in terms of legality, and it's not necessary in a small town.
It's also, in addition to Georgetown, there's also Ayr, and there are other small towns hosting them as well.
All right, I get, let me get through here.
No, no, just, just...
All right, let me, let me just, let me just, I let you talk a lot, let me let someone that hasn't talked, go ahead.
How many of these dispensaries do you people currently run and operate?
We are still in the licensing process, so this is our first.
Okay, next.
Uh, I went on a Google map today and I was trying to find Massachusetts dispensaries. Every single dispensary I found in eastern Massachusetts and central Massachusetts are in a city or town that's along the Mississippi Island. From ninety-five to ninety-five, I mean, it's probably about five miles, you get to ninety-five and maybe even less, you get to one and five, so Groveland's really seemed like the optimal place.
Can you show the traffic on ninety-seven?
Well, the, the traffic count on ninety-seven is very high, but I also need to come in here and say, our main focus in coming to Groveland was not initially the retail location. It was for cultivation and have the cultivation center here, which is manufacturing, transporting out of town, no sales happening in the town whatsoever. We were told that there was a retail location that was available in sight, in town, that fit the criteria and that the town would be interested in the revenue. So we turned around and we looked and we said, "That would be great to give back to the town the revenue." Now, the cultivation center, we were originally looking down at four forty-one Main Street, we found that did not meet the zoning. We are not opposed to, if there's an issue with the sales going on in town, consider the cultivation and just the manufacturing of it. It's no different than having any other textile plant or anything like that, if there's no sales happening out of it.
Wouldn't your property taxes be a whole on one, Roland, and would be a payroll in the city?
Yes.
Yes.
Phil, I'm sorry. Eddie Gorski, former member of the board of selectmen. You just said you were sort of romanced to have a retail, or come to Groveland. Who did that, without the town files?
Well, we weren't, no, 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 we weren't, we weren't romanced. What I said is, we, we, we identified what we thought was a good industrial site for the cultivation through our research.
You were interested in cultivation?
Through, through our research. And then through our research, once we started inquiring in town, we found out there was a site for retail that met the zoning for retail as well. So we were not romanced.
But we heard you say that you were encouraged. Encouraged?
Well, not encouraged, we said if you're going to do, if, if you're going, if you're going to do, if you're going to do the cultivation, we have this available as well.
That tweaked my interest when you said it.
Can I ask, who, who, who brought you forward? Who did you talk to?
Who did you meet with? Who did you meet with initially?
We talked with Orlando. Anybody else?
Anybody from the town?
No, no. Anyone from the town? Any town officials?
No town officials.
No town officials.
You met with no town officials at all prior to coming to the full board of selectmen?
We met with Denise and Mr. Wood to find out the process.
To find out the process.
We reached out to them.
This is our second meeting with the board, which was televised last time.
One more.
Having served on this board, usually that information goes before the entire board, that you talk about that. So why would Denise and Mr. Wood be the only two people discussing this prior to your knowledge?
We didn't discuss it. We asked what the process was, and they said, "You have to..."
We asked how to get on the agenda.
You didn't understand what the process was in that town of Groveland.
And the, yeah, the zoning information, we asked for zoning information.
And then we got on to the agenda.
Since this is your first project and, and... Why should Groveland be a training ground? We're a tiny town, small town, personality, character. This, we, we are truly committed to the youth of our community. We have beautiful playing fields, we don't, you know, we have bad school, we're short distance from where you wanna be. Um, I think we have a lot of worries in concert.
So I think we are hiring experts to come in and to consult and to, um, to help us run this in, in the best possible way. And you say Groveland is a small town with integrity and, you know, and compassion, but that's the kind of company we wanna be, so why wouldn't we want to locate in a town that has those same qualities?
Yeah, and I say, I, I'm sure the new kids on the block...
But we're also not out of state...
I don't want this town to be a training ground, or, and I've heard so many people say, because I've been out in the community, asking people how they feel, and, you know, it's half and half. And most people that support it say, "Well, it's gonna bring a lot of revenue to the community." And that interests me. What, it's like we're dangling something, um, dollars. Do we have any idea what a community stands to gain by being at our...
It's all pretty much critical in terms of how well it do in terms of sales. And the most of the, most of the places in place above cities in town identify a percentage of those that contribute to the community efficiently to that. We try to go state on certain ones that could be used for educational purposes, drug awareness programs to support your local chapters of drug awareness, or to support the local police. So to put it in exact dollars, uh, to your own right now, it's, it's pretty impossible. But in, in, in a successful operation, we need a second or third year of safety standard, um, and the revenue to the town will be seen in the dollars.
Well, we have Kentucky Regional School District who prides themselves on educating our kids. Um, we have a wonderful superintendent. I had a neighbor that said the seventh, eighth graders are going through an educational program right now about drugs and, um, what can happen. And then we turn around and we in Groveland are going to build a dispensary for drugs. And I know it's medical marijuana and it helps a lot of people, um, God bless you and your child, but I think people have a lot of concerns what's happening here and, and they're fearful.
So I would like to just point out, DARE actually removed marijuana from its program, so it no longer talks about marijuana in its drug, um, awareness programs.
Is that right, Chief? Is DARE kind of, we've been talking about...
We have an officer going to DARE in September. We haven't been in the DARE program for maybe ten, fifteen years. And I know they mentioned that last time, so I, that's the first one I heard.
And to note as well, the dangerous drugs, like I said, they're, they're in pharmacies, you know, and to, and to note, I, I wanna make one clear point about the, somebody had mentioned that there's a dispensary that doubles as a methadone clinic, that is completely false. You're not allowed to have anything within that dispensary other than cannabis products and the same. Now, it is, to note, that there are people that have used cannabis to successfully kick their opiate addictions. As a matter of fact, statistically, or be it overdoses, are down twenty-five to thirty percent in the states that have opium.
Okay, I have one more, one more person here that hasn't spoken back, go ahead.
Jill, can I just ask, how many, how often is it when you have to get medicine for Haley, that you have to go from dispensary to dispensary to get what you need?
Every time.
Every time? So there's never enough?
I don't know a single patient that, that is able to get what they need consistently at the same place every time. No.
Okay, I know Mr. McDonald's been wanting to talk, I'm gonna let him talk.
I just have a question for Rob about the business model. You haven't done any, you've been a business for what, less than a year, correct? And this has elevated, page seventeen of last year? So what experience do you bring as a business owner other than some of the other business owner, businesses you've had, like, I believe you've been affiliated with Wiser Together, Horizon Home, parents of other, um, businesses? What do any of those have to do with a medical marijuana dispensary? And how can you emphasize to this group how successful you've been, and that it won't just peter out in a year?
Can he stand up? Can he go to the podium?
Go to the podium.
Tracy, make the turn in just a little bit. One of, one of the, one of the advantages we have, and this might address your question as well, is that, um, we may be new to the registration process, but what we have done is we have been an astute study of what's happened over the last four years. The people that were in front of us were the people that were new to the process. We've taken, um, extraordinary measures to investigate how they've done, what they've done, what's worked, what hasn't worked, what makes them successful, what makes them fail. And we have collected all of the information from the, the industry as it's developed in this state so far. This is what good companies do. So now we are ready to jump in. We have done our homework. I have been, you know, I got first introduced to medical marijuana during my, um, recovery from cancer. It was, uh, it, it doesn't do anything to help with the cancer, but it sure did a lot to help with the effects of chemotherapy and radiation, which if any of you in the room have had it, and I suspect a few of you had, it's chemical warfare and it's, uh, it's debilitating. And it wasn't me that was using it, it was other patients that I met along the way. And that led me on a journey to a, um, a group in Marshfield called Magical Moon. I, I encourage you all to, uh, to, uh, Google it and, and check it out, where, um, a woman by the name of Donna Green, who's an, uh, you might know her from, um, she was a famous artist and, and, and author of children's books. And what she's done down there is nothing short of miraculous in that she has a farm. She invites, um, children with primarily debilitating cancer that may or may not survive their ordeal. And she brings them to the farm, they go on a journey, their journey as a duke or an earl, the queen of Groveland. And they get away from the, of the life of being in treatment. They go on a journey, they learn how to farm, um, they learn how to, uh, to, to mix with, with other patients that, and, and families that have the same affliction. So I've watched this over the years, and, and she is one of my motivating influences to do this, because what she has is a, it's, to say that it's underfunded, it's underfunded. And they are actively always trying to raise funds, and this is one of my missions for them. But what the, the biggest part about it is, is she has a template of something that is incredible. And if we can take that template and imply it in places, other places of the country, it would be a very fulfilling thing to do. So this affords me the opportunity to, uh, this is purely a philanthropic operation. I have two charities. One is Magical Moon Farm and Foundation, the other is Shriners Hospital, where I'm extremely committed to raising money for, for Shriners. And this gives me a vehicle to do it that I didn't have before. I have sold all of my shares in my previous company to do this operation. So I'm very serious about it and I didn't enter into it without doing my homework first.
Okay, go ahead. So you've done your homework, but nobody can give us any kind of projections in terms of the percentage of business you hope to derive in Groveland?
When you say the percentage of business in Groveland...
You must have a business model that you're projecting what your income and sales will be.
We will have to submit to the Department of Public Health what we project our sales to be. It will be predicated a lot on what size building we're allowed to put up, how many square feet of canopy that we can grow. So it's a, it's a moving target.
I'm comparing those two, the cultivation center to locate in Groveland.
One minute, Dan.
From your own dispensaries, you need to open within the common law. Share the revenue in those other towns as well because of cultivation.
Okay. I'm gonna let this one gentleman here talk. He hasn't spoke yet, and then I'm gonna go to Dan, because Dan wants to talk.
Bob Prunier, Seven Heaven Road. I've been sitting and listening, and we need to take care of the people that need help. But also, if we let them start building or whatever, and then the town decide, oh, this is terrible. Is there a way of getting money upfront? I don't know what you call it, and put it in the bank and so on. Comes to a problem that we want to throw them the hell out, that we have their money that we're throwing them out with. Do you know what I'm saying?
This is a very long process for me as a first step of a very long process. After, after the community, there's a whole special funding process and a lot of...
A lot of time, a lot of time spent, and then a lot of building and this and that. So much can happen between that time. The government come in and say, you can't do this anymore. I think it's really good, especially with Trump there. So I think if we're able to get X amount of, a couple hundred, whatever it would, whatever the number would be, so we have money to fight them with to get them out of towns we need. Or something like that.
I know, I like you talk already. I'm sorry, but I know Dan wants to talk, and I'm gonna let Dan talk at this point.
I have questions for you guys. As far as I'm concerned, you know, my job is look up for the welfare of this town. With all the uncertainties for risks, concerns of people in town, I'm in no hurry to draw a conclusion on this. As it is right now, I'm planning to oppose it because of all the risk factors. Let me ask you this, because to me it seems like there's a gold rush mentality going on here, and if we don't buy now, we miss the boat. What's it, what, we could just sit back and do nothing here and go and play and just watch the movie play out in other towns. Let them make the mistakes. Let them go through all of those growing pains. I'm concerned about the real impact of growing pains on this community. You know, my hat goes out to anyone that has an illness, absolutely. But again, you know, my duty is not for the people in Georgetown. My duty is not to the people that do not live in this town. My duty is only to the residents of this community. I'm not here to save the world. It would be nice if I could, but I'm realistic about my abilities, okay? So, you know, why, what is your deadline? I heard, you know, you know, it might be four months or something like that. You gotta get your process moving on or you die on the line. I don't know the procedure on that. But why should we as a town or board jump to a conclusion here with all of these unknowns and all of these uncertainties? Now, the law is evolving. The regulations on the recreational marijuana will postpone. Bruce, Senator Bruce Dodd got together and he pushed it off six months, and I thank him for that. Because we need to be cautious. I believe in, you know, you have to take chances to make advances, but look before you leap. If you jump into this blindly, it's tough to unring the bell sometimes. So I believe in moving cautiously. We can always, as a community, if this is too good to be true when money's falling from the sky on medical marijuana and there's zero impact or the benefits exceed the risk to this community, we as a community, next year, the year after, five years from now, ten years after, we could sign on board. We could woo somebody else in here and say, hey, we got, we got plenty of land here in Groveland. We got all kinds of trees. We can chop down a bunch right here. So what's in it for us to move on your timeline? Well, I'm just saying, I want to sit back and see how this plays out. And I'm cautiously pessimistic that this is going to be a Cinderella tale for the people hearing of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. But I'm not a state legislator. I'm not the governor. I'm not the mayor of Boston. I'm not a selectman here in town and my duty is to these people. So I think we can wait. I mean, it may not work for you, but that's not my, that's not my issue.
So I've spent more than fifty hours of testimony at the State House regarding regulations and such. This step right here, this letter of non-opposition is approaching the town, has been thrown out many times as being eliminated. So you can do that. You can wait. You can wait at least some of your say in what company comes in. As long as, as long as you are confident in what you're gonna buy laws and your zoning, I think that's great. But I think, you know, then you have to put them waiting. But I would just point out that this step and this say by you could at some point also be eliminated.
That's furthering your point. This has been...
So, so to clarify your point, you're saying that our say...
The, the letter of non-opposition in general, yes.
So the state's gonna come in and say, okay, cannabis wants to come in the road six minutes, and we have no say?
So they think that they've given towns at this point ample time to create their bylaws and permitting processes? And that this step should be, it should be ultimately...
The decisions discussion.
Yeah, go ahead.
This has been in place since two thousand thirteen. It has been...
Let me just finish my point up. I haven't got my point finished. Let me finish my point. My point is, is I, sometimes it happens in Groveland, and I'm not saying you people are here. What happens in Groveland, we get scare tactics, okay? And I don't want this to be a scare tactic.
No, no.
And I'm, I'm, what I'm trying to say is, I want to be clear that the people in this room and the people watching this TV understand one thing. What you're saying is, down the road, if we don't, if we sit on this, don't do nothing with it, the state can turn around and say, okay, a cannabis company can come into Groveland without your say.
Not under the current regulations, no.
But they still have to go through our zoning, gotta go through our planning, gotta come before the Board of Suckers.
What she's, what she's... I'll research that. I want to comment on that. What she's saying. Okay. Okay. I've, anyone who wants to look this up, it's the Congressional Research Service did a report on, and I looked it up under the federal preemption, okay? Because my issue is this, because I said to myself, all right, I'm sworn here to represent people and the will of the people out here in Massachusetts for it to legalize this. And I said to myself, okay. I was sworn into what called the U.S. Constitution, okay? Under the supremacy clause, Article Section Two, U.S. Constitution, federal statutes, we're not the supreme law of the land, okay? So whereas federal law preempts, okay, the federal government cannot force a state, local jurisdictions to enforce federal laws. You can't do that. But, okay, so if you want to smoke marijuana or you want to do what you want to do, you can't make the Groveland PD say you gotta go arrest that person under federal law. You don't have to do that. They don't have the resources, whatever their reason is. But there's a distinction under the law when you, when you participate in the licensing process. Under the Control Substance Act, the sale of marijuana is a listed controlled substance. It is illegal under federal law. So under federal preemption, okay, the state cannot make it impossible to comply with federal law. They cannot make a law that says you have to do this. They have to give you an out under the law. And the out under, under the Constitution is local control. So the state can say, all right, we're gonna deviate and allow the deviation of federal law, okay? But we can't mandate on the people. So what you're saying, and I don't fall, I don't agree with you, and I think it might be somewhat of a scare tactic, that if we don't buy now, they can impose this on us. I'm telling you, my research tells you, I'm a practice law, and I'm a tax lawyer. I'm not a constitutional scholar. But let me tell you, I've been trying to wrap my head around this issue, okay? Since it came, I read everything I can get. I'm arguing. I get a hold of professors at my law school. I'm arguing with anybody to see what they're trying, trying to throw against the wall and stick. And I haven't heard one valid argument to say that it's not against federal law. All the arguments are, well, the Obama administration pushed through on their budget, okay, a non-enforcement act. I think there were four, four bills that intact on our budget. They lapse at the end of the fiscal period. So we got a new administration in there. Trump Sessions was gonna be nominating, okay? He's against marijuana, okay? He's for the war on drugs, okay? And if he enforces federal law, which under, under the Constitution, and I was sworn to uphold it, no disrespect to the people in the Commonwealth, also the people in Groveland that voted for legalization of marijuana. I pledge allegiance to that flag and not to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts flag, okay? We have a republic system. We have, we have a federalist system, okay? When you talk about the will of the people, all right, let me tell you something. The will of the people, right? Every state in this union ratified the Constitution and there would not be a state. We have representative government in the form of a senate, an house of representatives, and we have a president, okay? They enact laws. The will of the nation supersedes the will of a minority liberal group of people that under the Obama administration has been lax in enforcement and been forcing through these laws. So, no, but that's the backdrop though. I don't want to get too political about it. That is, that is underpinning us of how we talk here today.
I want to stick to the point while we're here. I want to stick to the point while we're here. And I know you want, you want to get to this. I don't want to...
On his, on his issue that if we don't do this, the state could mandate unequivocally. That's what I heard. Anybody else here? Anybody else here? When I say work on, come on, come on.
Come on, Dan.
Before we go, I just wanted to follow up because I put some...
I go on, listen, I asked not to be talking out, and I'm not, I like to keep talking out.
Okay. It's relative to the last point.
It's on point.
Okay, this will, I gotta keep this thing moving here.
I understand that, but we're not doing, we're doing it to service if you don't listen to some of the facts that we have to...
Go ahead.
So I'm reading from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Office of Health and Services regarding medical marijuana facilities. In there, to the point the young lady in the front row made, it says the number of RMDs per municipality. It is up to the municipality to determine how many RMDs it means appropriate for the community. The municipality may express that determination through granting or denying a request by an applicant for a letter of support or non-opposition. And this is the key point here. An RMD will not be permitted to proceed to the inspection phase if it has not obtained a letter of support or non-opposition. I'd like to enter this into the record if I may.
And again, I want to, the reason for that is they can't impose it or it's impossible under the federal protection constitutional standard. It was on point, Mr. Chairman.
All right. She's up here. Let me...
We have local control and we always will.
Okay, go ahead.
I just want to say for the record that we do not want to override your local control. That we do not believe in scare tactics. Our company is different than most medical marijuana companies. We are a hundred percent owned and operated. We don't have investors. So we would be a different type of company. And that's all, really, we want to make sure that we get across to everyone here. We want to work with the town, not against the town. And that's why we were very open to making sure that we could have this meeting here. So I just wanted to make sure that everyone understood that that's where we're coming from.
Okay, Mr. Watson wants to speak next.
I'm troubled by a few things here. I'll start off with, in your facility plan, you list about thirteen different items here, what attributes of an ideal facility. And you list convenience central location. I don't see where there's a convenience central location. Adequate space to house retail and/or production operations with room for future growth. That's a little troubling by the statement. And you have here ADA compliant. Every building's got to be ADA compliant. That's not, it shouldn't even be on here. Plenty of off-screen pockets, easy to monitor and secure. But local transit is available. And also in your facility plan, I'll just make the comment that you have here access to public transportation. It is hopeful that local transit services will regularly service the area where the facilities are located. I don't have any of that.
Please, no talking.
Minimal build-out required. I don't see where Groveland meets your demographics in your attributes of an ideal facility. And further, in your, the comment about the smell. I don't know if anybody saw in the Boston Herald on January twenty-sixth, two thousand and seventeen, it was out about last week. A Boston city councillor, probably bungle a name, Anissa Essab George, went out to Colorado to view the facilities because of the problems that they're trying to get these up in Boston. And her comments in the paper, she noted the smell around the Grove facilities. Her statement was, it's wicked. It's wicked. It's like driving through New Jersey with the oil refinery. The smell is everywhere. Mr. Chairman, I say, once we, if we allow them to build here and the smell is terrible, once they're here, you're not going to get rid of them. I think in this case, if we make an error, it should be what's in the best interest of the town of Groveland and not what is in the best interest of elevated access. And further, somebody had mentioned the fact that there aren't enough dispensaries to serve all the patients, lack of facilities, lack of dispensaries. And I've seen traffic and the long lines at methadone clinics, especially the first thing in the morning. I don't think that this is something that the town of Groveland can support. We need business in town, but we need the right business. I look at this as a quality of life issue and a safety issue. And I don't think this is the right business for the town of Groveland, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Mike, I'm gonna let you go ahead and speak now.
Sure. So I, there were a couple of questions that came up that I wanted to address. One of them was what's in it for the town? That's varying. That's open for discussion, depending on what kind of funds we're looking to receive. It could be for the school. It could be for the roads. It could be for the fields. It could be for whatever we deem the most pertinent to, to put the funds towards. The other one was about educating your kids. I talk to my kids about drug use, not just marijuana, but opioids, about alcohol abuse, about smoking as well. So a lot of that is reliant on the parents and the people in the town and not the companies in the town. So I take that on myself as a parent of two kids in the school system, to educate them on my own and not allow anybody else to educate them on my behalf. As far as what type of background I have done to review this, I have read a lot of articles, just like some of the other board members. I have looked at what some of the surrounding towns have done, just like the other board members. I've talked to residents, just like other board members. I've also talked to congressional staff on Capitol Hill about the legalization of this and what the federal government could and could not do. I've also talked to the FDA at their headquarters in Maryland about this process, about what could happen and what could not happen. So I have done my research. At this point, I am inclined in favor of this. Saying that, I am not opposed to getting more information, be more educated and have more hearings on this because being more informed is good for everybody. That's it for now, Bill.
All right, thank you. Bill?
Yeah, I guess I have a couple of points. And I'll make the arguments as quick as I can. And the first argument or point I'll make is probably the weakest, and it's about the revenue. We all could use the revenue. Ms. Prunier, she would help with that library expansion, I believe.
Oh, no, no, that's not on the board.
And Ms. Stanton, you know that senior center that we're looking to get in this town doesn't come cheap and the money doesn't grow on trees. Chief Lake, you're always looking for a new truck. This is possibly a way to finance that truck. We've got a new high school coming down the road. You think that's gonna be cheap? Hundred million dollars is not cheap. And that's, that's probably a fair estimate of what that school is gonna cost you. So get that number wrapped around your head. The second is, I've seen the help that is done, and I've seen the help personally. It's, it's, it's nothing short of a miracle in some cases, at what medical marijuana can do for some of the sick people. If you've ever had a sick child and you're gonna tell me you wouldn't do anything possible to help that child, you're not being true to yourself and you're not being true to anybody else. The third point I'd like to make is control. If it's in our town, we have control. If it's in Georgetown, do you think the people are gonna drive over the river, around through Byfield to get to Georgetown? through Byfield to get to Georgetown? Folks, you're not being serious. They're going to drive right through our town. The traffic is going to be there, only we won't have the financial resources we need to control that. That's going to be in another town. If you think Georgetown or Byfield or anybody else is going to cut us a check to help with the traffic that goes through this town, again, I don't think that's going to happen. And, and the last point is much to the point that you made earlier. If you believe in God like I do, you believe that God put everything here on this earth that we need, he just left it up to mankind to figure it out. Now, some things are good and some things are bad. Opioids are bad. My daughter is 24 years old. She has buried eight of her classmates already. And that's not from marijuana overdose, that's from opioid overdose. I got a call from a, a feller I coached little league baseball with on Friday. A feller that we coached for four years, passed away on Friday, 23 years old, from an opioid overdose. This is a tragedy, folks. And if there's a possible way to divert these young people from an opioid addiction to something that may help them in a natural state, much like aspirin, then, then you have it. I'm all for it. It's a very, very difficult, difficult decision. I am not for the recreational use, and I never want to see that in Groveland. That would be a catastrophe. I agree with each and every single one who's out there. But this is a different issue. And if it's in our town, we have the right to control it. Can we pull a license from anybody at any time if we show choose?
I, I don't know.
Can we not, well, the liquor stores come up for licensing every year. Can we not sign off on one of those?
I don't believe so, because they're licensed to the Department of Public Health.
No, she's talking about liquor stores.
Oh, liquor, yes.
We have the right.
Yes, you have the right to pull a liquor license. Yes.
Why would we not have the same right when it came to that?
Because you're not issuing them a license. You're issuing them the right to proceed. The Department of Public Health, correct me if I'm wrong, is the one that issues the license.
And believe me, if you had any issues with us, you've been the representative of the Department of Public Health, and our necks would be on the chopping block. We have to surprise inspections from them, very tightly regulated, tighter security than any bank you have in town. Tighter security than your pharmacies right now, to just take bins off the back of the truck. Susceptible to robbery any day of the week, much, much tighter security, much, much more than we regulate it than any.
To me, the, the key is education, and you're willing to fund their program, and that's where it starts. It starts with the education. Most kids, believe it or not, do not start out with a joint as their first drug of choice. It's the Budweiser in your fridge. It's the bottle of wine in your cabinet. It's not a hard drug, okay? It's a very simple drug that you can find in every city, in every town, in every state in the country, including Washington DC. That's where most kids start. That's where I started. And if you're honest with yourselves, that's where you started. Your first drug was alcohol. From there, but for the grace of God, go I, that's where it started. Some people don't have that ability. And that's a sad, sad situation.
Hey, Bill?
Me or Bill? Bill.
Bill, Bill Dunn, can I say one more point before we move on?
Sure, go ahead. If Bill was done.
I'm, I'm.
Okay, good. Just to reiterate a couple of points that Bill O'Neil had mentioned, when we're talking about this, keep in mind that we're talking about medical versus recreational. I agree that at this point, we don't need recreational in town, but we're talking about medical only. Is that, that coming through?
Yes, I think so.
Okay. Secondly, the battle of, someone brought up the battle of federal government versus state government. That is going to lie with Elevate and, and the federal government, not the town.
Okay.
Wait, one more thing. Tomorrow, I, I'm in DC right now, and I have several meetings around town with the federal government. I'm happy to continue asking questions about what their philosophy and what their viewpoint point is with multiple states coming on board with medical use for marijuana. That's it.
All right. I'm going to talk. Um, I'll let you come back. Okay. Number one, I was voted by the town of Groveland people to do a job for the town of Groveland. And as most people hopefully know, how I am is I strictly do it for the love of Groveland. I strictly put my heart and soul into the love of Groveland. I brought you people out here tonight to hear you, to hear from the candidate people, and draw my own opinion. I will start out by saying, number one, we can go to the ballot box, we don't have to, we don't have to make this decision tonight. Number one, I feel bad if you people have a timeline, you need to get it done by and within, I'm sorry. But we have the right in the town of Groveland to put it in our ballot box and make 6,000 something people vote. That's number one. The two, I will say that my coming into Groveland, I would love it. People in this town know me, I am business, I own a business, I am 100% in favor of getting business people to come to Groveland. So, that being said, I have nothing against you and your business coming to Groveland, but the Route 97 site, I will come out and say right now, I'm adamantly against it. Reason being, there is a house across the street. Furthermore, this facility, number one, after all the conversation we had tonight, this facility, you're a new upstart, granted. Number one, the town of Groveland hasn't had the chance to sit down, and I grant, I understand what you're telling me. Yes, we can sit down, we can iron out a contract, whatever. I'm the type of person is, it has to be edged in stone with me ahead of time, understand? And maybe it's the board's fault for not sitting down with you ahead of time and fine tuning this, but personally, me, I say, there's too many open ends on this. I would really like to see more discussion, I would like to hear more from you, I'd like to hear money. I mean, I heard your, your conversation, wow, I don't know what we can generate right now. I, I mean, if you had come to me and said, "We can give you X amount of dollars, we can put a park, we can do this, we can do that," I might be for it at this point. But what I've heard tonight, I cannot make a good informed decision. And some of my points was, someone had talked about cash only. Why is it a cash only business? I don't even want to know right now, but why is it only a cash business? I wish my business was cash. But anyway.
Recreation.
Uh, let me, let me finish my point, it takes me a lot to stay intact. Um, the Grove facility was going to be at 441 Main Street, and, and I understand the bylaws wouldn't accept it. What I'm saying is, and me, again, back like I just said a minute ago, Groveland, I'm for business. A Grove facility with no, you know, no recreational, no dispensary, hiring kids, good idea. But yet, do the kids get into this Grove facility? This is how I'm looking, it's just maybe me being me. Do they get in there? Can they get at the material? I don't know.
It'll have to be 21 plus.
Okay. All right. Can they get in there? I don't know. The facility, in my eyes, in my eyes, should be someplace, if it was going to come to Groveland, should be 100% secure and out of the sight and mind of people. We have a very big company here in Groveland, it's chested in, they make aerosol cans, they make solubles, et cetera, et cetera. Very safe company. They operate inside the four walls of their building, they have fire people in there, they have engineers in there, very safe building. I do not think that what's been presented to me tonight, that I can make a, a, an informed decision of what I got in front of me. That's just me. The other part I was going to say is, again, that the people, we can have, you know, we can talk about it as a board more or whatever, they can vote tonight, whatever. I just don't feel that I have enough information, there's a lot of questions, I don't think we answer the people here. So, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I mean, we're not going to be able to answer these questions for the years to come until it plays out in real life in other communities. And again, I don't want Groveland to be the game pig for this social experiment. So, at this point, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to motion this board to deny a letter in support or non-opposition to elevated access for a site as stated in the legal notice. I'd like to make that motion now.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second the motion.
Thank you.
To oppose, to oppose a letter in support of or non-opposition of. The law requires one or the other. I oppose both. Was that clear on that?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. These people are looking for stupid.
I oppose a letter. Without a letter, if we sat on our hands on this, nothing happens. That's what I want, nothing to happen.
Okay. Ed, second it, Bill. What, what do you feel on it?
I'm always for one that, that likes to practice due diligence. I, I, I don't want to get into bed with someone before I turn out the lights, as I've said before. And I'm all for slowing down the process until we can iron out more of these issues that we obviously have. I've heard from a lot of people myself, Bill, it, it, it almost breaks down the way the town voted, 6139.
This is a cash-only operation. Nothing to prevent a change.
So, I, I'm not for making any decision now until I get more facts and that the details of any agreement be ironed out fully in complete detail, much like you're looking for.
Okay, there's a motion, okay?
There's a motion.
Request.
And it's open for discussion, I believe, isn't that correct, Mr. Chairman?
It is.
That was my discussion.
Got your discussion. Okay. Mike, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm in favor of, of gathering more information and slowing down the process to a point. I would like to have some of the questions answered that were brought up by the townspeople that weren't entirely answered. I am not in favor of, of 100% non-opposition letter that Ms. McDonald had recommended.
So, you're, you're saying, say that again?
That was discussion. That was discussion, we haven't voted.
Okay. All right, so, we have the discussion, and we're going to go to, again, Dan, let's just say that one more time, your motion is?
All right, let me be clear. My motion is to oppose a letter in support or non-opposition for elevated access to have a medical marijuana dispensary at the location stated within the legal notice.
Okay.
Opposition on your letter.
Okay. So, Mike, you go ahead and vote. We're going to start with Mr. Wood?
No.
No, you're, you're?
No, I'm not in favor of the motion. Is that clear?
Okay. Mr. O'Neil?
No.
No. Um, no.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So.
You brought up the motion, you said no.
No, I'm in favor of the motion, Wood.
Yeah, I think it's going to be.
Um, it was, it was.
I'm in favor of the motion. So, again, I think Mike rephrased it as in favor of the motion, or again, so, is the question, in favor of the motion?
The motion in second was on your motion.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, if I could clarify it, the paperwork that we have here is, the EAC is seeking a letter of municipal support or non-opposition from the town, once the site has been mutually agreed upon. And I think that's.
Just to deny their request.
And deny their request, and I, I still second the motion.
Yes, Wood.
Okay.
Can I amend my motion?
Go ahead.
Motion to deny their request.
Okay. Second it. Okay, Mike?
No.
No.
Yes. Mr. Watson? Yes. Okay, so, we're all set, and we're going to go ahead and, I'm a paperwork back here again. We're going to go ahead and close the public hearing at 9:34.
You need to, I'm sorry, you need to roll a call out of the public hearing, please.
Call out, uh, Wood?
Yes.
O'Neil?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Nick, all right. Yes. Okay. Mr. Chairman, I, I request that just, uh, we're going to recess till.
That's fine. Tracy?
Yeah. We're going to, they're going to recess? I don't know if you heard that.
Okay. Um.
Do I need to close that door? Are there people outside?
We're going to restart the meeting at, I follow, is that 9:30, 9:44? 9:44?
9:42.
9:42. Okay. Ed has asked if we can go back to selectmen time, because, um, he skimmed over some.
Mr. Chairman, I, I forgot all about it here, I was going to bring it up on the selectmen's time. Thank you for going back. But I, I'd like to add an agenda item to the next meeting. The water department is going to be moving out of town hall here at some point. And I, I think we need a study to be done on what, what space is needed for what departments, et cetera. And I, I'd like to, I know, the, the perfect person for that, for the job would probably be Kermit Cross, he's got a lot of experience in it, very dedicated to the town, and he'll, he'll do it impartially, and we could put that on the agenda, maybe for an appointment of him.
An appointment, or to have him?
Have him, have him do the study, appoint him to, to do the study.
All right, well, so, we're going to just put on an agenda item to discuss, we, I don't think, discuss a point person part, a point person for the study of the town hall office space, or?
Office space, and, you know, we, we do need, as we brought up at our last meeting, we do need storage space. Maybe he could look also into what is, what's available in the basement of, of the town hall, whether we need a dehumidifier system, I'm sure we do.
It's actually against OSHA, we can't put the, anything down there because of all the furnace and the boilers, they won't allow us to put storage in the basement.
Well, let's have him, him look into that, he's pretty well.
Yeah, he was our facilities guy here, he's the one who put that in place.
That's why I suggested him.
All right, we'll just put it on there, and then whenever we can get it fitted in there. Are you good with that, Ed?
Okay.
All right. One, one thing I was just going to, it's kind of a maintenance note here. Have we done anything on the, or has anyone here heard anything from the water department as far as going to those other buildings and checking those buildings out? Has any of you guys heard anything? Because I didn't know.
He said whenever you guys wanted to, when he was here, so, it's just a matter of when you guys want to go.
Do you guys want to try and schedule something to visit those buildings?
Yeah, could we do it early in the morning on a Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday?
Can you send him a note? Is that good for you, Ed?
Do you want to narrow it down to a specific week, like next week, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday?
I could do this Friday.
Um, the, um, the light department's existing building and the water department's existing building.
I can do this, I can do Thursday, Friday morning, early this week.
Okay.
Yeah, this week I could do it early.
What time, what time is early?
Eight thirty or nine, eight thirty, nine?
Well, hell, I'm up at 5:00 AM, so, anytime after that.
What do you want to do? Eight thirty? Eight thirty.
Okay, eight thirty?
Bill, that okay with you, Don?
Get out of there by nine?
That okay with you? Oh, yeah.
Half hour door at the most.
What day?
Friday.
No, Thursday.
Oh, Thursday, Thursday.
They should be out soon.
Okay. Okay, that was, that was it for me.
Okay. We're going to be able to do that Thursday, this Thursday at 8:30 in the morning?
Yep. Well, he, I think you have to check it out with them, right?
Yeah, I'll confirm with him, I, I'll call the light department and make sure it's not a problem with them either.
Um, no, it wasn't the light department, it was the, uh.
They're going to go to both buildings.
But you want to see, they want to see the existing light department, correct? 23 School Street?
Both of them, both buildings.
Yeah, and, and Washington Street, the water department.
Yep, so I'll talk to them.
Can it start, have, if it's possible, to have it start at the water department building?
Sure.
Not that I'm trying to, I have someplace to be, but I think I can be there for eight-thirty, if we start there, I can just take off, I've seen the light department.
Yeah, I've seen that one too.
Okay.
But you wanna see both, you wanna see the light department as well, right, Dan, Bill? You wanna see both buildings?
Yeah.
Okay, well, they've already seen the light department, I just wanna make sure that you guys wanna go to the light department.
I'd say both.
Okay. Let's start at water, okay.
If I can't make it up to us two days.
Okay.
I'm sure they would accommodate you, you know, at another time if you were available.
Okay, so, moving on, we gotta go back to the fiscal year two thousand eighteen budget discussion.
Just clarifying that, will we meet first?
Bill would like the water department. I'll, I'll send out an email to confirm. It's Washington Street, I'll send out an email.
I have someplace to be, I'm gonna try, I really wanna go through that, but I bent through the other one, so if they can start there, and then you guys can.
I bet I know which one it is.
On Washington Street, the little brick building?
Yeah.
If I go for the wrong one, so.
All right, email.
Yeah, I'll send an email out.
Okay. Okay. Okay, so, we need to go back a step, and again, we're gonna do the fiscal year two thousand eighteen budget discussion.
Yeah, so, this is something, if you remember from last year, I just sort of start putting on every agenda for questions or discussions, I have a couple updates since the paperwork came out originally. The state aid numbers came in a little bit higher than we were estimating, not, not a lot, but we did get additional money in unrestricted general government aid, which is good. Our retirement allocation came in lower, they originally sent us to, sent it to us in December, and then we got a revision just last week that they actually miscalculated, so they sent us a lower appropriation, so that is favorable.
Lower for what?
Um, retirement, the Essex retirement appropriation. However, we got a revised school number, and as of my meeting on Thursday afternoon, the current numbers that they're working with are up four point seven percent from last year. I don't know if the end of the table heard me on that, so, I'll just hold on a minute.
Four point three, eight point five.
We're up to four point seven for the schools?
Yes.
Yep. And with no, with no explanation other than possibly because we have too many, not too many, but more kids in the school, more costs to the schools?
Um, a little bit of both, so, they're still working on that, and they are trying to retweak those numbers. Again, special ed costs are up, they have additional special ed coming in. I, I believe there's an issue, Merrimack has a few students that don't speak English as their first language and need somebody on site almost around the clock to help translate. The state aid numbers for the school actually went down, so, school state aid is decreased, so they are absorbing those costs. The three communities met with them on Thursday, pretty much told them the numbers that they provided were not sustainable without an override, and they needed to do that, so that's where we stand right now. With the new school numbers and the additional state aid and the decrease in retirement, as of today, we are at a deficit of two hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars.
That's in our budget.
Again, with no capital and with no salary increases.
We have two fifty-three?
Yep.
So, back to the schools, can we get the, or would it do, would it be beneficial for us to get the school committee members in here to talk to us, to go out and help fight this, or they can't?
Yeah, well, I mean, they're still working, so this was a revised budget from when they originally submitted it, and as I said, all three communities have told them that is completely unacceptable, so they have to, they are still working on it, I just wanted to give you an update of where it is right now.
Okay.
And that's just a Pennsylia assessment, is it?
Yes, that is correct.
So, they're looking at practically nine million dollars.
Um, that is correct. Nine point three million dollars, to be exact.
Which is three quarters of our budget. Before we pay a bill, before we do anything in the town of Groveland, before we buy a truck, car, buy a truck, anything, we have to, three quarters of our budget goes out to the schools.
Yes.
Okay.
Um, so, that is Pennsylia. Essex Tech, right now, they have six Groveland students which applied for enrollment, they do not make their acceptances until early April, so they cannot tell us how many students will be going there, it costs approximately seventeen thousand dollars per student to go to Essex Tech. Last year, we increased the budget slightly from about one hundred and seventy-three thousand to two hundred thousand, we did not have any additional students last year, so there is a slight cushion in the Essex Tech line item as it currently stands, so if they add one or two students, then we should be okay and not need to increase that appropriation. I did bump it up to two-ten in the requested budget, just to add that cushion in there, but we will not know that until after the budget is closed. The way it works with Essex Tech is they tell us how many students, they set their budget, and then in October, we get a bill from them on how much we owe, we have no say in their budget process, we are not a member community, our students can only attend there if it is agricultural or veterinarian, they go freshman year as exploratory, and then they must stay in one of those fields in order to stay at the school. I believe we currently have ten students there, we do not have any seniors, so we are not attriting any students, we are simply, oh, no, I'm sorry, I think we have one, we have one senior, we have six fresh, six sophomores, three juniors, and one senior, and no freshmen, so we will be down one student and then add up to six, it depends on how many they accept. They did have record number of applications this year, and they only accept, I believe they said three hundred and seventy students overall, of all of their, I think it's nine or something districts, so, I'm sorry, Essex Tech has many more, so, they have, you know, only three hundred and seventy slots, it'll be sort of a waiting game to see if they actually accept any students. Whittier, I have not gotten any information as of yet, they usually have, start rolling out information in March with their budget, so that's where the, the three education budgets stand. Otherwise, the finance committee has been actively meeting, they've been holding their budget meetings, so, a question I have for this board is, do you want to meet with departments, do you want the finance board to meet with departments, how would you like to proceed? Last year, you chose a few and had them come before you, I'd just like to know if, what you wanna do on that. Mike will be here at the next meeting to talk about community preservation, you have the capital articles already submitted to you, or their request, so just a matter of where things stand with the regular departmental budgets, is just how I would like some direction, if you wanna meet with anybody. And then if there's questions now, we can certainly go through that.
Well, me, as far as budget, it's meeting with departments would be the ones, which I think I've seen and heard, that the finance board's talking about anyone that had increases, and they've been discussing it with them?
The finance is meeting with every single department of every single budget, so even if it's a small budget, they are meeting with them.
Okay. I mean, ones that are out of, out of line, that, that are, you know, from last year to now, that are out of line, I mean, I would like to have the conversation with them, I don't know what the board members would like to do, but.
Uh, yes, uh, yes, I agree, there's a couple of, there's a couple of issues that just, to me, just kinda stand out. Everybody is basically, has it included any salary increases except one.
That is correct.
And I think we need a, that's a three percent increase, I think we need some explanation on that. Also, also water and sewer. Let me just, uh, we have here, if you look at the water, the water and sewer budget, what do we got here, the water department, on the purpose, requesting twenty-one thousand four hundred and sixty-five dollars for extra for salary adjustment, I'd, I'd like an explanation on what that salary adjustment is, seems like a lot of money, twenty-one, twenty-one thousand four sixty-five, nobody's, nobody's asking for any raises, but what's the salary adjustment?
So, do you wanna have them come before us and explain it, or do you wanna just?
Well, if, if we can get a, if we can get an explanation, then they don't have to, if they do, if we, if we're not, if we can't get an explanation, I think we just have to come in.
Yeah, I, I can say that that line item was included in their budget last year, it was just included under the salary line, so they didn't break it out separately, but I can certainly ask them for more specifics on what that specifically entails.
So, so, in other words, correct me if I'm wrong, but last year, they were, they requested the same amount.
Yes.
So, somebody was given a salary adjustment, some of the employees were given a salary adjustment?
They function in a sort of step salary, so, based on the year you have, and based on your license, so they offer, I think if you get a certain license, it's an additional fifty cents an hour, and on an anniversary, they move up to a different step level. But I can have them clarify what that, that twenty-one thousand dollars fully represents.
Yeah, that was water side, I don't know if it was.
I think it's on both, but I might.
Yeah, on the, well, I don't see it on the, on the sewer side.
Well, they called it additional money.
Additional money, step increase fund, one thousand, one seventy-eight, what, why, why isn't that included in their regular salary? Maybe we could get that.
Yeah.
It just seems like it's a, it's a hidden pay increase here, but may not be.
And then, Ed, did you want the first department you mentioned, do you wanna have them come in? I believe in the narrative, the budget.
Department, but it.
Well, the budget narrative, I think, may touch on that a little bit, but I don't know if you wanted more, or if you wanted them to come before you.
Well, let's, how about if we get some information, and if we needed anything further, we can, we can have them come in, unless, or my colleagues want them to come in.
Dan?
Can I weigh in on that?
Sure.
I think, you know, I'd like to see just a strict budget guideline, that no, the pop and should put through, you know, that percentage without, you know, I mean, here's the thing, we don't have a budget that's in balance as of now, so, if we're making it out of balance by pay raises that exceed what traditionally we've tried to be, you know, generous in terms of, at least the cost of living adjustments, you know, but, you know, three to five percent raise should be excluded for our first round of this, if there's money left over in the budget, I think we could discuss it, but we're gonna get really bogged down in, you know, who's overworked and underpaid, you know, I, I think that could be handled, you handle the HR Denise, right? I think if somebody truly believes that they're underpaid and overworked, I think we could have that discussion with them and screen that out, and if there's merit to it, you know, I would defer to you to say, yeah, this person's, you know, working in the last guy out the door locking the door, dropping the key off at the police department, and, you know, I'm all for, you know, merit-based pay, it's tough in the public sector, but, you know, on our first go-around, I think we oughta, you know, set a guideline, are we gonna go with a two percent cost of living adjustment, are we gonna say one percent, one and a half? Or can we hold out on it, but?
That's us, we can make that say.
Why don't we say on the first draft, let's see where the numbers fall at two percent, nobody can go over.
So, I did, in the budget letter that I put out to people, which is in the beginning of your book, I told people not to, to build their budget and assume no more than a two percent increase from fiscal seventeen's figures, and that includes no salary increases, is what I instructed.
But we have a draft there with three percent, and so, did they not listen to the instructions?
They think they want more, we should probably have that conversation with them.
So, we knock that three down to two?
Or you wanna have Denise have the conversation with them?
I think Denise can have the conversation, I mean, I don't know.
No, I'm serious question.
And then she can bring us the answers?
How much does it take off that two fifty-three?
On the one person?
Yes.
It's minimal?
We're not talking about saving twenty thousand dollars.
No, but again.
We can put money somewhere else.
But again, right, there's no salary increases in here for anyone other than Deputy Gillen, 'cause his was already approved by this board.
And we can do the best we can, but we have to also make a compromise and balance, you know, the whole thing.
Yes.
Right.
But again, that includes.
Flat, right across, flat.
That includes all requests.
So, if we get one person or five people saying, I deserve more, and you might say, maybe you do, but can we afford it, is the follow-up question.
So, we have to say, when we, when we come to that point, of what we wanna set, but, on the same token, do you wanna hear why that, my point is, do you wanna hear why that person wants, or they deserve that, it, we can do it as a board, or we can have Denise as the PR person?
I see it more as a grievance type of thing, you know, you're burying me with work Denise, you're not paying me enough, you're killing me, you know what I'm saying, I think I go to Chi, I go talk to HR.
That's fine.
If it's just, I wanna cost of living adjustment, well, I mean, unless we raise taxes on people, which I'm.
Can I just?
I don't want to, more than, you know, if I could freeze it, I would.
All right, let me go one step further, can we get a narrative from that person, a written narrative, explaining why they think they deserve it?
I think she put it in her budget cover letter, as to why she feels she deserves an increase, I'd have to double-check, but I was fairly certain she put, she feels there's additional responsibilities of the department, but I can certainly ask her for more clarification, and I just wanna comment on something that Bill asked. Just keep in mind, the deficit at two hundred and fifty-three thousand, where it stands right now, is based on department-requested budgets, so that is everything that people may have asked for, although you will see there's very little that's asked for on the town side, just because of increases to health insurance, liability insurance, and now education, without the most recent school increase, our deficit was seventy-eight thousand, so the rest of that right now is all attributable to the school, you will see there's really not a lot of extras that people have asked for, just to put that out there.
Denise, nice question.
Yep.
Did every department submit a budget within a two percent increase from the prior year, or did they exceed that?
No, so, well, yes and no, because there's no salary increases, so, when you factor in the salary increases, it may exceed that two percent, because they, right now, we don't know what to put in.
So, you're saying?
So, you kinda get away with it a little bit, because you're not putting salaries in, so when they submit their budget request, it comes in less than two percent, but when you factor in salaries that may be higher than your expense side, it's gonna exceed that two percent.
Well, we can't go there.
Right.
So, so, why don't they decide and submit a budget that falls within two percent or less, and, and if they wanna, I mean, otherwise, what are we gonna do, we're gonna give the pay raises, right, two percent, because the contractual guys get it, and what are we gonna do, say, sorry, you guys don't have a contract, too bad, that's, yeah, that's not the way I was brought up, to believe equality work.
Well, and again, I just wanna comment on that before you, so, the non-contractual employees, at one percent is eight thousand, at two and a half percent is twenty-two thousand, I mean, so, the non-contractual side of things.
It's small potatoes.
Is small in the grand scheme of a sixteen million dollar budget, so.
But the increase to health benefits may not be.
Correct, and so, the GIC has a public hearing this week, to try and finalize their rates, they're around three and a half percent, but they're not entirely sure as of right now.
But that's why I think each department manager should try to prioritize, not only staffing needs, maybe they can get by with less manpower, more, be more efficient, if you don't put the, kinda the onus on them to be creative, to stay within two percent, then it's just what I referred to in the years past, the magic spreadsheet with two percent increases, and there's really no, there's no incentive to kinda figure out a, a, a more efficient way of doing business, so if every guy in the department wants a pay raise, then they have to figure out how to get by with something less to come in that two percent, I mean, I just, you know, and there might be situations in public safety where that's just.
Right.
It might be academic, and it's just not realistic, and, and certainly, I would, I would, I would listen to that, but on the first one, I don't think anybody ought to submit a budget for their department that exceeds two percent, we need that other half a point for unknowns, you know, if the sky falls, stay within between one and a half, I think we should be disciplined on that.
And I actually don't think, with the exception of, so, we are talking about one specifically, and that's actually for several different reasons that it's over two, I don't recall any that are actually over, some didn't calculate their percentage, I had put it on the spreadsheet, but other than, you know, certain departments, there's really not a lot of exceeding the two percent, unless it's necessary, like, for instance, town council, so I requested a significant increase in our town council line, obviously, that's not gonna stand at two percent. Departments that may be requesting additional personnel, which, right now, the town planner is being requested, obviously, that's over two percent, but the majority of the budgets have.
So, we could strike that if we decide. So, we could strike that if we decide.
Correct, correct. And I will tell you, I believe the finance board is leaning towards, right now, they're not supporting or denying any requests. But they would like to see the town planner specifically be on a separate article in the warrant, not in the omnibus budget. They like to have anything new, any new initiatives, any new positions, be separate as a separate article, so that there can be debate on just that specific item on town meeting floor, instead of holding up the general budget.
I like that.
So, that's where they, and I believe the planning board was supportive of that. So, you may see the omnibus come down by that, I think it was sixty-five thousand they put in there. And you may see that go into an article. Still funded the same way, but just to give a different debate on town meeting floor for those extra items.
It's a good approach to isolate any new one and why.
Correct.
Why, and how are you gonna pay for it?
Yep.
As long as I've been around the government, town government, that, in the town of Groveland, I see that every department here pretty much runs at, or above what they need to do. They don't ever go crazy. Most of our money in this town is given to the school department. And really, we, every department is not over exceeding what they need to do. They run tight as they can possibly run. And I mean, I've looked at, I've looked at all the paperwork and everything. I don't think they're out of control. And my point is, if someone's looking for a percentage, crazy, you know, explain it, that's all. And, you know, until we can, until we can find how to control the school budget and bring that in line and stop it from coming up, we have no say every year. That thing just grows and grows every year and it dips into what, how we're running our town.
Right.
It stinks, really.
And I do just wanna say, I mean, I get it, but it's, it is other, you know, health insurance is a huge impact to our budget. Retirement is a huge impact to our budget. So, we are a small community, you know, having a health insurance number or a retirement number at four hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars, I mean, that's huge to us. So, and our insurance, you know, five hundred and thirty-seven thousand with liability insurance, which keeps going up every year. You know, every time we have liability claims, our insurance goes up. And then our health insurance. So, those two numbers there are a million dollars. So, take off the.
And no revenue base.
Correct. So, take off, you know, sixteen million, take ten for the schools, another million is our insurance. We're down to five million dollars for general government, public safety, highway, roads.
There's nothing.
We really are bare bones. I mean.
Running, running as tight as he can run.
Can we shop those policies or increase the deductibles?
So, I, I. I did. I did last year. I did last year change some of our property and casualty deductibles. Unfortunately, unfortunately for us, it was offset by the cost of claims that they've seen on many different things. You know, we've had a few car accidents, we've added a few vehicles without sort of taking vehicles away. I am getting a quote this year for new police and fire, so it's one eleven F benefits, 'cause I think we're paying on things that we really don't need, or it's just that we've been with the same company. So, I do have another person giving me a quote on that. The GIC, we're not gonna find a better plan that's gonna save us money. I mean, so, health insurance-wise, and that actually puts the responsibility on the state to beat up the insurance plans. They will make sure that they get a number that the state budget can sustain and therefore we can sustain. You know, it's still difficult. I will tell you, the way the GIC's looking this year is, as I said, right now, they're around three and a half percent. The plans came in initially at over eleven percent and they've been beating them up back and forth. That will come with plan design changes. So, just keep in mind that it's three and a half percent. You know, we have a seventy-thirty split, so our employees are paying. But they will start seeing more share of the responsibility in payments. Deductibles are going up, copayments are going up, out-of-pocket costs are going up to offset the percentage. So, I will say, you know, it depends how you see it. But for us, instead of us paying, you know, six, seven, eight percent, we are cost sharing with the employees, because they will see higher out-of-pocket costs going forward.
Now, that GIC, are there options within that or you just sign on to the group plan and it's one size fits all?
No, so, there are nine different plans in the GIC.
Yeah.
The majority of our employees are in one of the lower costing plans, which is good. The way it's working, because premiums are escalating so high, they are actually freezing. So, the state is freezing insurance. So, the Harvard plans are frozen, no one new can join. If you're in it, you're grandfathered. If you come out, you can't get back in. The Tufts plans are being frozen, you can't join that. So, for us, if anyone new or anyone switches insurance, they cannot go into the highest costing premium insurance plans anymore.
Does each individual employee have a selection or it's just?
Yeah.
It's the town?
No, no, no. So, you each have, so there are nine different, so we have Tufts, Fallon, neighborhood help.
Any employee can pick?
Yeah, you can pick from any one of them.
And their cost varies and so does ours.
Correct. Except going forward, employees will not be able to pick the most expensive plans, they're gonna be frozen. So, yeah, they have nine different plans to choose from. And they all operate from HMOs and referrals to indemnities that don't need any referrals and you go to any doctor. No, straight indemnities.
Is there a big difference between the bottom of the nine pile and the top nine?
To be perfectly frank.
Not to be like bottom line cheap, but.
No, but.
I mean, if you said you gotta pick one from the bottom five, was that good coverage?
Yeah, to be perfectly frank, the most popular plan in the, what I would say, I mean, I can't publicly endorse one, but one of the better products is the most expensive. It functions as an indemnity. You can go to any doctor in the state of Massachusetts that's a licensed physician, no referrals. You don't need to stay in a circle. That is, I've personally been on that plan since I've been with the GIC eight years ago. No, it is an indemnity-type plan. And that is the least expensive plan, because that is under the Unicare umbrella. And Unicare has a contract directly with the state. It's not a Tufts, it's not a Fallon. Unicare is a state indemnity plan, so they are able to offer lower costing products. That's what the majority of the state employees are in, as well as the Unicare products. So, if someone's coming to me and says, you know, what can you recommend? You know, I always say, look at premium, that's your lowest. And what do you want for flexibility? That offers you the most flexibility of any plan that we have. So, to me, I always try and advise people to look at that. But people still like the names Harvard and Tufts, so they naturally migrate those ways. But we've seen fewer and fewer people staying on those and people migrating to the benefits to us, to the lower costing plan.
It could be possible for new hirees, maybe grandfather some existing employees. But any new hiree, maybe we could get rid of the most expensive one and they could choose, you know, could we say going forward, doing something like that?
Right, well, the state's done that for us. So, the state is grandfathering. You are not allowed to enroll in the two most expensive plans going forward. So, if you're in it, you can stay. But if you leave, you cannot get back in. So, those plans are off the table for any new employees or anyone switching. You can't switch to those after July first. So, they're doing that for us by trying to, you know, 'cause of course for them, you know, when state employees are in those plans, it's costing them as well. So, because the average is three and a half, but when you look across the plans, you know, those Harvard and Tufts are coming in at like eight and nine and the Unicare is coming in at like one and two. So, there is a large variation, but last year, people that were in Unicare actually saw a decrease in the premiums, because it's so regulated by the state, where the people that were in the higher plans saw higher increases.
And what does it boil down to for the average of all of them? What are we looking at, for a percentage increase?
They think it's around three and a half. They're supposed to be voting Wednesday.
So, if we're a point over Prop two and a half, how do we squeeze that in with a shoehorn?
We cut elsewhere.
You gotta cut someplace else.
Yeah, but I don't know.
We're already running.
I know. And you guys were talking earlier, I don't know if you heard, the revised school budget is four point seven percent up from last year. So, they are still working on that. But that was the newest number I got on Thursday, was four point seven.
Denise, did you say up from last year?
Up.
Yes.
Nine point three million.
So, they are working on that and the three communities have told them that is not acceptable.
Who got pay raises on that?
You know how.
They're still negotiating a teacher's contract.
The money there that, it's, I call it DORA or whatever, that money, we haven't, we don't know our number yet.
Free cash, no.
Free cash, right.
So, the state's making the rounds. The state was at Merrimack on Friday. I'm not sure when they'll be out here. We've been in communication with them. We're just waiting for them to actually come out and do their certification.
So, when they come out, would you let us know, you know, even, you know, as soon as you possibly can?
Yep. So, we do keep in mind, we do still have money from last year's free cash. We did not use it all last year.
Right. But that's good to have in the bank.
Well, and it is, it is. But, you know, we have, we did invest significantly in stabilization. We put money in OPAB in capital last year. So, we do have reserves. Free cash is good for, you know, if you wanted to offset some of the capital costs. If we needed to close the gap on the budget, you could certainly use some of that. It's really not advised, 'cause it's one-time revenue. But if we're in a bind and we have cut everywhere else and we still can't make up that last gap, instead of going for an override, you could use free cash if you needed to. So.
The state aid.
Say a number on that?
No, I said last year. We still have last year's free cash available.
You know, I'm always looking for a number, right?
Yes, no, I just said, Bill just asked that.
I just asked.
Free cash, you got an idea where that's at?
I just asked, I just asked. And she said she doesn't know from, they're just coming around now.
Then will you know?
So, the state is making the rounds. The state was in Merrimack on Friday. We have been in communication with them. We just don't know when they're coming here yet. We don't have a specific date.
I see how that works, 'cause it's always been a mystery to me. It's like the Coca-Cola formula. You know what I'm saying? All right, now, don't you have a cash figure? And then you give it to them and then they have to QC it and then they certify it. But don't you have a number? You prohibited from disclosing what that number might be until it's a hot and fast certified number.
So.
Because you must have some idea, how much cash is in there.
Yes, so we certainly know how much. So, a few things. So, it's not.
I'm not gonna hold you to it.
No, 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 I'm just.
Give me a ballpark.
So.
I will, thank you for that.
So, I don't even have a ballpark right now. The auditors are still finalizing the final audit reports. So, when they finalize their reports, we come back and make our final closing journal entries. Then I will have an unofficial free cash number for you.
When do they do that?
I actually talked to them this morning. They were waiting on one item just to finalize. The town accountant was out today. She will send that to them tomorrow. That's the only thing. They just wanted to check on something before they sent those drafts over. So, they should have that very soon. I believe they, well, I don't believe, I know they have everything else they need from us. They're just waiting on. They were waiting on a few things on their end, but now they should be good to go with drafts.
No, 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 I'm gonna use it. But hold on, I just, go back to state aid. Do we have, do we have any number from them?
Yeah, so, do any of you guys listen to me?
No, I heard from you, but I kind of went fast and I didn't write it down.
So, state aid has increased, the governor's budget gave us an increase in state aid. So, the unrestricted aid has gone up.
But no percentages or?
Yeah, so what I originally estimated, I mean, it's, you know, it's.
About twenty-eight thousand?
Yeah, it's about twenty-eight thousand. So, what I originally estimated was seven, just under seven hundred thousand. We got seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand. So, it's about twenty-eight thousand of an increase.
Twenty-eight thousand more from last year.
Yes.
Twenty dollars a student. It's a hot off the rack, right?
Yes. But like I had said, the school state aid has gone down, which is attributing to why they're looking for more money from us, 'cause they've gotten less than what they originally projected. Now, that's just the governor's number. It has to go through the House, it has to go through the Senate.
So, state aid, now, I'm gonna clarify. State aid, I want people to hear this. We're talking school state aid. We're not talking state aid to help Groveland run.
No, no, no. The numbers I just said are town Groveland, town of, the town side.
Right.
Local aid.
Correct. Unrestricted general government aid. So, that's for the town.
That's for the town.
The other piece I mentioned was the school aid to the schools.
Yeah.
Has decreased from what they projected.
Hundred percent.
Yep.
So, the state aid we're getting is about twenty-eight thousand more than, yeah, roughly.
Yeah, I mean, it nets out to be a little less, because we actually lost money in veterans' benefits, because we have fewer veterans.
Compared to the budget we have.
So, so, a net comes out to almost nothing. But when you look at the different categories, it's up in unrestricted aid.
I think, Ed, did you wanna say something?
No, I wanna yield to Dan, because it's on the subject, but not, not what you're on right now.
Go ahead, Dan.
Just to clarify, I mean, I'm pushing for a cash figure. What I wanna do is avoid what happened last year. I felt like I, you know, fought a few things, maybe a little too much. And then I heard from some people that miraculously in the eleventh hour, we come up with, I think it was six hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars.
Yep.
If I had known that we had that, I may have approached the truck a little different, say, the ladder truck. I may have said, you know, why don't we put a down payment of two hundred thousand on it, out of the free cash? You know, or two fifty, we may only have to go to the debt exclusion on half a million instead of seven fifty. So, again, bad facts make bad decisions, you know, and everything's hindsight. And I wanna avoid the hindsight, okay? And we had a lot of discussions, debating what we couldn't afford. We can't afford forty thousand in radio, but we'll do the trucks later. And I wanna know, how much excess cash do we have to pay for these things? I wanna see the whole picture, you know, as soon as we can. And I understand you have your regulatory restrictions and I don't want you to break any rules. I don't want you to say you have money, you don't have it, and somehow it changes. But as soon as you have an idea that, you know, it's gonna be five hundred to six hundred, I think we ought to know about it.
Oh, and I will tell you, as soon as I have an idea, usually when the state comes out, they have an idea the day they leave of what they're gonna certify. They usually have to go back and get it approved, but they will give us what their solid number is.
That's all.
Yeah, I will give it as soon as I have it.
All right. Ed, you wanna go now?
Sure. When, I, I, with the school figures from the three high schools.
Yes.
Could you, when it comes up, and I don't want you to do it now, give us the per pupil cost for the three schools? What we're paying at Whittier, what we're paying at Penn Tucket, and what we're paying at Essex Tech?
Yeah, so Essex Tech is about seventeen thousand. The per pupil assessment, I guess it's, I thought it was on the spreadsheet. I'll get you that. It might be on here from Penn Tucket, I thought it was. And the Whittier, I wanna say it's around eighteen, but I have to confirm that for where we were from last year.
And also, it came to light a few meetings ago, we had, we had an appointment, a couple of appointments that we made. And I know Senator O'Neill mentioned the fact that why, why we weren't paying on the minimum wage? And then it came to the point that the town didn't have to pay minimum wage. And could we get some figures, what it would, what it would cost us to bring those people up to the minimum wage? I just think it's absurd that we don't have to.
Yes.
But don't do it now. When it comes up, to bring those people up to the minimum wage.
Well, I mean, just for clarification, so you know, the only employees that are impacted by the general fund budget would be the library pages and the summer cemetery help. The only other people that are under minimum wage are the summer recreation and their, obviously through a revolving account. So, it's really just the library pages and the cemetery summer. So, I can certainly calculate those.
Calculated, what you're gonna cost?
It can't be a lot.
And it's gonna be minimal.
Although I will, my only comment to that would be, keep in mind specifically with the library, I believe their assistants are making just above minimum wage. So, if you're bringing pages that are at, you know, eight dollars an hour or so, up to eleven, and you have those other employees that are right around eleven, there may be some people looking for other equity. Just keep that in mind. But I can certainly calculate that. There's not a lot. It does not impact a lot of employees.
And Bill, do you have anything else?
No, just to clarify that, Ed, you talking about bringing the summer program kids up to minimum wage as well?
No, no.
Okay.
Eleven dollars an hour, isn't it?
No, in fact, the summer program, I thought they were making, I thought they were making more than that.
No, so the.
For the minimum wage?
Yeah.
No, the initial, the initial camp counselors are about nine dollars, I think they're at nine, nine fifty last year.
Yeah, we had something last year, we gave them like nineteen cents an hour raise.
Yeah.
Yep.
We argued over that.
Mike, do you have anything else you wanna talk about on this subject?
Yeah, with the raises that were being discussed, didn't we just talk about not having enough money to give people raises that were full-time in town and now we're talking about increasing other people's base pay? Is that, is that, am I hearing that correctly?
I think so.
I think that's where I heard it.
We just wanna see what it's gonna cost to bring them up to minimum wage.
I mean, I'm okay with, you know, finding out what it will cost. I just, I just don't know, you know. We're already having problems with revenue and having a shortfall of where we are versus our budget. So, you know, even if it only costs ten thousand dollars to bring them up, there's still ten thousand dollars actually we don't have. But, I mean, figure out what the exact numbers are, we can go from there.
Yeah, it's easy to calculate. Like I said, there's not many employees that impact, so I can do that.
All right. No, other than that, I'm good, Bill.
Okay, thanks. All right, so we all good with the budget discussions?
Well, so, I just wanted to follow back up. Do you wanna meet with departments or is there anyone specifically you'd like to meet with?
We were gonna just get in it, we have one in the front of the book. We have one explanation why they're going up.
Yep. So, you want water and sewer? And I'm just, it's the assessors department, so you have the assessors and water and sewer. So, I can get written explanations at this point?
That's what we want, Bill.
Do you wanna meet with, do you wanna meet with public safety?
Mike?
Or do you wanna leave it to the finance to really, they are meeting with every department?
Well, I know the finances don't, but just get a consensus of this board. Mike, would you wanna turn around and meet with them? Or do you wanna get a written narrative?
I think initially, we can get a written narrative and then if we have further clarification, we can ask them to come in and vigilance.
Bill?
I got a two hundred and fifty thousand, thousand-dollar budget deficit. They don't need to meet, they need to cut. Whatever they sent us, they need to cut. They need to balance this. 'Cause we don't have any other source of revenue, so it's gotta come from expenses.
It does. And again, I. It does, and, again, as you'll see, expenses, there's not a lot of room for cuts with, unfortunately, we do, we have a, we do have a bare bones budget as far as, um, you know...
So that's, that's part of the problem, right, we have bare bones budget and not enough tax base to, to set that.
You can back, you can back in the free cash later on.
Well, but we can't count on an X number of, of, of revenue from, uh, free cash either. It could be fifty thousand dollars, it could be five hundred thousand dollars, like Dan said, we don't know.
Right, and again, you don't wanna get into the habit of using free cash, that's really, because it's, you, then next year you're gonna start in a deficit, because you can't count on that. That's really in the event of we've cut everything, we've made every change we can, you know, we're now short thirty thousand dollars. Then you'd say, alright, let's use that small piece so that we don't have to go for an override, we don't have to cut a digit.
We had this discussion last year, not that I'm saying, I'm not saying I'm being over, overly, um, optimistic here, but we had the same discussion, we felt like we were in a deficit at, at this point in time. And once things, we got, we were all set, so...
Right.
I, I mean, let's, let's, number one, let's narrow it down, do we want written narratives for the people that, that are out of whack?
Well...
Stop there?
I have to disagree with you. We, we, we weren't all set until we got the free cash, that bailed our butts out.
Agreed.
We should balance this budget without that source of free cash, just in case.
Right.
Right, but I will say, last year, we were in a similar situation. The free cash we used, uh, was primarily for the eighty-five thousand OPEB, and then it really was just a small difference that we closed that gap. Again, the budget deficit is based on department requested, so there is still room, and we certainly can go through and see what people are requesting, and maybe, you know... Not, again, not that anyone's requesting anything significant, but, you know, there may be some tweaks there, it was sort of like, not like a wish list, but we can certainly start making some cuts. And I do think that, um, you know, looking at what departments requesting, looking at sort of their narrative, why they're requesting certain things, you know, we may be able to do a first level, you know, skim of some of those expense lines.
Right.
You're gonna find though...
I think what Bill's getting at, the closer we get that existing budget down to zero, the delta between any free cash we might get is increased and can go to other programs, not just to salaries and, and, uh, office expenses.
Right, right.
You can use free cash.
But until we have a school number that's more solid, you know, hopefully the school will come back and be seventy-five thousand dollars less, or a hundred thousand dollars less.
And they'll get a lot of moving parts.
Correct, and again, the state aid is based on the governor's budget, it still has to go through the House and Senate, it could increase, it could decrease. Um, so we do still have a lot of moving parts, which is why, you know, we should still start looking at the departmental budgets, and you can all make recommendations on, you know, even if you took something specific, the planner, you know, where you wanna stand with that. Um, anything that might sort of be out of the ordinary, that might be added.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Senator O'Neill?
Sure.
Are you saying kick it back to the departments? And let them get their scalpel out and cut their own budgets by a certain amount? I thi- I think they oughta do it, because they know...
They know their departments better than we do.
I don't.
That's why we pay them, right?
Yes.
So they should have the handle on their numbers and their people and their resources better than anybody in this town, right?
So what percentage is, what are we off, two hundred and...
Two fifty-three.
Right now.
Divided by, back out the school, right? You back out the school because we don't have control over it, basically, is that what you're saying?
Right, so we were at about seventy-eight thousand before the school.
So we can only control what we can control, right?
Correct.
So, we need to get two...
So we were at seventy-eight before the school number was our deficit.
Now we're at two fifty-three.
Can't touch the school part of it.
I can't touch it.
It's great.
Correct.
So you're talking about seventy-eight thousand dollars, you're gonna go back, you're gonna go back...
But that seventy-eight thousand oughta be easy to kick back to the departments on a percentage base, take the seventy-eight divided by the remaining budget, and if it comes out to point zero zero one, tell everyone to cut that out of their budget and kick it back to us.
Right, but I think, I think what I need to...
Well, premature, my point is we're premature to do that, I think.
Well, you are, but I think what this board needs to do, so again, that seventy-eight deficit includes one full position, it includes an eighty-five thousand dollar contribution to OPEB. So those are the types of things that you need to see, do we wanna keep it at those levels?
But that, that, OPEB, it is a real liability.
I agree, no...
In fact, we're underfunding it at eighty-five thousand dollars, it oughta be a hundred and forty-five thousand or something, I mean, we're...
Or we just pass this dead on to our children and our grandchildren.
I don't, I, I, I gave the immorality speech on that last year, I think we oughta pay as we go.
I agree.
Help me do that, Bill.
I agree.
Help me.
So leave that eighty-five in there.
Leave it in there, maybe it oughta be...
So now you leave it in there, but you have to, but you're gonna leave it in there, but you're gonna tell some lady in town hall, you're gonna lay her off because we have to cut her budget back, or tell her to...
I'm not saying that, but, but it...
Well, that's what you're initially saying, when you go back...
Here's the deal, those, those benefits benefit every employee that is to receive them at some future date. So the way I see it globally in the big picture is, maybe they gotta forego a cost of living adjustment, because they're gonna get it on the back end.
Hold on.
The money still goes to them.
The two percent is what we put in for the town employees for the, a non-contractual for a, in this budget?
We put nothing in.
You put nothing for in, a percent?
There is nothing, that deficit is there with no increase, period.
Okay.
The increase will be another twenty-four thousand dollars, is what you're saying?
So twenty-four thousand would be, well, depends, obviously depends on the percentage.
Of course.
Right, but, so here's the breakdown, non-contractual employees range from eighty-five, or eighty-eight to twenty-two thousand, depending on the percent.
If it's two percent, that's more than I hope of that.
Alright, so two percent would be seventeen thousand for non-contractual, and then your contractual employees, if you gave every union in every contract, it's another thirty thousand. You'll get forty-seven thousand dollars to give everyone across the board a two percent increase.
About what we've already got for the deficit.
Forty-seven plus the seventy-nine.
Yes, sir.
Yes, that is correct.
So we're gonna deal with the reality, I mean, it's just...
Right.
How are we gonna do that? You gotta kick it back to the departments and say if you want to pay raises.
Plus you wanna put the OPEB money away, and plus you wanna put the retirement money away.
Right, Bill?
You, you have to, I mean, it's such a huge liability, Bill, that if we don't start putting away money now, somebody is gonna have to pay that.
I agree, I was the one last year that was the one that pushed for the OPEB money and the retirement money, I took it out of the free cash and put it away, I was wanting to start it, it wasn't done before, until now. My point is, I don't wanna crucify these people in this town that run the town so cheaply, now, for seventy-eight thousand dollars, I'd rather take the money in free cash and, and, and put it in there. Rather, we run at a very, very, very tight ship.
Assuming we have the free cash, right, yeah, there wasn't it, right?
What?
Two years ago, we didn't have free cash.
Correct.
I, I don't think you can assume...
It's counting, Mike. But...
Thanks on it.
You see, what, what we're doing is, we're, 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 we're wishing on both, that we have enough free cash every year to fund these budget deficits instead of, uh, funding the, uh, budget without that into the equation.
Right, right, hundred percent, and, and we are having this conversation, we should be having it after we know when they come here and talk to us, that's my opinion. We, we don't know that number, you know what I mean, we don't. I don't really wanna go around and have to cut a, a, a town that is running as tightly as they possibly can.
Nobody does.
I understand that, clearly.
But...
You don't have it, you can't spend it.
Businesses, it, it clearly dictates what you can do, and if, i- 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 if, if you, if you have a million dollar business that's going down to five hundred thousand dollars in a year, you certainly don't have a hundred employees, you gotta, you, you down to fifty, that's just...
Agreed, agreed.
Well, then how do we get around it?
We're talking seventy-eight thousand dollars, we're not talking...
We're talking seventy-eight thousand dollars with no salary increases.
Exactly.
We're talking a hundred and thirty.
So, so Bill, Bill, we're, we're gonna turn around, and we're gonna give the town employees zero money, and we're gonna go to the departments and take a percentage away from them because we can't meet our goals. You get what I'm getting at? So really, we're crucifying them two different ways, we have, we, if we had this conversation a few weeks and we knew what the free cash was, and we had to throw a little money to get there, and we still should be able to, in my opinion, give a little, if, a little bit of OPEB, and a little bit for retirement, and do what we need to do. I think this conversation's premature, that's just my opinion.
Stabilization, we get up to ten percent.
Correct, so there's nothing, so right now I have no, um, I didn't put anything in for stabilization or capital stabilization, cause that is a good use of free cash, is to put them in those reserves when you get free cash. Um, I did put OPEB in the budget, that was something we discussed last year, finance fought you a little bit, they put it back, so eighty-five thousand is in the omnibus budget for OPEB. And that is a commitment that this board made, that I've put in there to follow through with.
Alright.
So that is in there and part of that deficit.
It's a step, it, it acknowledges, at least, it'll arrive to be something.
Alright, let's just do it, let's just, let's go back, do you guys wanna, and we did this last year, do you guys wanna take the book, have a special night, or a night, meeting night, to go through and flip it page by page and discuss each and every thing?
I think that's the most efficient way of doing it, that's why...
That's how we did it, and that's probably how we should do it again.
So would you like any departments here for that, Ed, do you wanna just discuss it amongst yourselves?
Probably start by me, start by discussing about ourselves, and then we'll narrow it down from there.
I mean, I can certainly go back to each department and see if there's anything they can trim, and see where they can make some cuts from what they requested.
You were pretty adamant with them in the beginning, right?
But, but, you know, times have changed, and now...
If you say they trim their budget, or we'll do it for them, I mean, I don't, you know, in the finance committee, I don't know where they stand on this, they, they produce the budget, so, I mean, I don't wanna step on their toes, I respect the finance committee, we've got all the people down there, and they're happy.
Yeah.
But Bill, you are... They haven't done all that work yet.
Mr. O'Neill, you are on finance, right?
Yes.
So, what do they like to do, and are they gonna, are they gonna set parameters on limitations and department budgets, are we, we, are we duplicating their effort? I, I, I wanna know, where do we stand in terms of...
I can't speak for them, because it's almost, the, the entire committee has almost been completely turned over.
I can, I mean, I can speak.
I can tell you that, when I was on it, for the four years, we were very, very, tried to be a very, very conservative bunch.
But if they kick it back to the departments and say, no, you gotta get this down to zero. Then, then why would we spend a marathon session on an evening, and I'll, I'll, I'll schedule what I can, alright, I'll, I'll, you know, I did last year. But I wanna make sure that's fruitful. If finance is already doing it, should we say, hey, finance, do you need our help on this, where are you going with it?
I have a meeting with them.
Because last year, you know, I think I personally rubbed them the wrong way, you know?
Right, so...
Yeah, I did. Yeah, I learned from my mistakes, so we'll do, we'll do it differently this year. So, if they need our input, I, I'm okay with letting them go first, but they can't show up on March twenty-seventh type of thing, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So if, what's their deadline on presenting a budget? And then I think we oughta, oughta look at theirs and have a, maybe a joint meeting and say, where are you guys on this?
Yep.
With me?
So...
Am I making sense, Mr. O'Neill?
Yes, absolutely. Okay, go ahead, Denise.
So the way, and, and we've talked about this before, the way a traditional municipality operates as far as the budget, and I do believe in the statements that have been made by the finance, this is sort of the position they are taking, is budget requests come in to this board, this board makes a recommendation to the finance, then they will make their final recommendation to town meeting. I think, based on the discussions they've had, they are looking to this board to make recommendations to them first, by way of any increases, any anomalies, do you support them, do you support the new position? They're gonna be looking for your guidance, so that when they make their final decision, they know where this board feels. Um, they are planning to isolate anything that sort of jumps out going through the budget and have it in a separate cover letter that will go to town meeting members, that shows, you know, this may be a four percent increase, but we've deliberated, we feel that it's necessary. But I don't know, uh, and you can certainly speak to the chair, um, I don't know if they will make recommendations until they get a recommendation from this board, is the way that it's been progressing. All they've been doing is gathering information, they are meeting with departments actively, um, they have not made any decisions, they have not taken a stance on any budget requests, um, because I think they're gonna be looking for, uh, guidance from this board. So, I, I believe...
So they don't wanna tell us what they found before, until we go find our information first, that's what it sounds like to me.
Right, we'll get, that's normally how it works.
Alright.
The requests come in here, or, in a, in a traditional town, a town administrator who would then make the recommendation to finance. That's what they're looking for, is this board to make a recommendation, again, on those specific sort of anomalies or, um, items.
I, I think we need to approach it, I, I would triage it, I would say, you know what, run the budget with no new hires first, and no pay raises. And, and see, see where the numbers fall first. Cause if you can afford it, you can always add back, but if you don't have it, you don't have it. And then, so if there's no new positions and no pay raises, then the bu- the, the, the departments might squawk about that, and you say, well, get creative here, you go find what you can live without, there's wants and needs, and you go figure them out, okay? But, I'm not gonna go to town meeting and ask for a prop two and a half over, like, cause we added new payroll and, uh, expanded our bureaucracy, you know? And I'm not saying, Bill, you know, I, I listen to what you're saying, we're running lean anyways, there's always ways to be efficient, and if you can't afford it, you can't afford it. I run a little business, right, a little small office, and you know what, when you run out of money, you know what, you might not wanna cut hours for people, but you have to do it, or you go, you go broke. So you wanna go broke, it's a choice.
Yeah, the big difference between the business and, and the municipality is, when, when, when...
I can go make a sale.
You can go make a sale, you can go solicit business, this is, this is the revenue stream we have.
The sale here is go hit the taxpayers' wallet.
Well, that's not a sale.
That's what I'm saying.
It, it's like being on social security.
And I'm saying, I'm not willing to do that, Mr. O'Neill.
Very defined...
I'm not willing to do that.
And fixed income.
There's no reason why this town can't live within a two percent increase. I mean, for, not for nothing, a lot of cost, you know, and I, I try to look at things, eh, eh, not scientific what I'm gonna say here, but you know what? If you look at consumer price indexes, you look at two dollar and twenty-five cent gas, prices have been pretty stable over the years, okay? Over the last few years, health insurance costs have escalated, I mean, that's skewed without a doubt, something's gotta get real good with that. But, in terms of electricity and water and overhead and stuff like that, for the most part, we're pretty stable.
Right, but that's a little unfair, because when we're looking at almost a five percent increase on the schools, a three and a half percent increase on insurance, that means the general government side, you need to look at less than one percent to make up for the other percentages, so...
Exactly. You're pulling from the...
It's a little unfair to have people...
The school committee, it needs to be fiscal conservative.
You're gonna run this, you're gonna run this at zero to give it over there, and there's no explanation over there, that's my point.
So, I, I do think, until we get, and hopefully we'll get it in the next week or two, a more solid number from the school, then I think we need to start looking, cause until they give us a final, there's still a working number.
Last year they came back at what, two point four nine percent or something, they got it under two and a half, they have to.
Well, last year, if we recall, the initial number was it was going to be a decrease of two point something, and they came back with an increase of...
Eight hundred grand, I thought.
Almost flipped it four, four, five percent.
They said it was because of special education, and that whole discussion.
Now, another thing coming down the pipe, we might wanna talk about is, is the new, uh, education secretary is not a big fan of public education. She's all for charter schools, which means, if the federal government decreases their federal funding to the states for education, well, the states are gonna decrease their funding to us.
But the question, the expansion of charter schools failed with the ballot, failed, so it shouldn't be any more expansion of that, you know, hard to tell.
Well, put it this way, if the feds cut the, cut the money they're giving to the state...
Yeah.
The state's not gonna, what are they gonna do, right? The state's gonna cut the, the money they give to us.
Ripple effect.
So that means we're gonna have to come up with more money to fund the school.
This is gonna affect issue.
So now that gives us a bigger budget deficit.
We need to lean on the school committee to stop giving the teachers union, the job and the raises and benefits, I mean, they gotta, you know, streamline that over there.
Why don't we have that conversation, why the, why we can't, why these towns...
And then on listening, Bill.
Well, wait a minute, wait a minute, why these towns cannot go to the school committee and find out why the increase, increase, in, in, is going up? I mean, I, we gotta get control over this, we have no control, and it, this is draining our town, it's not that the department here, and the people in this town hall are not draining our town. Our town is being drained by the schools, one hundred percent. Granted, I understand the special needs, granted, there's a lot of cost over there, I understand all that, but our town is being crucified by the schools. And I'm sure Merrimack is, and I'm sure West Newry is, and we all should get together, the selectmen should get together, and we should go in and have a meeting and try to find out what is going on. This is not being controlled, it hasn't been controlled, it's been going on for years, and we have no control. And I think that should be one of our initiatives, to try and get this under control.
The reason for the escalation is, they, they, they revised it, what, two years ago, I believe, they had a step system, and for the first ten years, they were getting seven percent pay raises, okay? Alright, Mel Queen went in there and he changed that formula, but that formula was a disaster, okay? So, why do things go so long before people say, you know what, this is financially, uh, you know, unsustainable? But it all comes down to, you get a tenure system, you get a seniority system, and the union-based, uh, teachers' union, and the longer they're there, they keep getting these steps, and they get pay raises that are above them, beyond prop two and a half. The teachers' unions fought prop two and a half when, I don't know how old I was, was that nineteen eighty or something, like fourteen years old? Oh, they thought everything was gonna be calamity, well, they've been working around it all of these years. And the problem with our regional school district is there's nothing, and I'd love for Lenny Mara, our representative, or Senator Bruce Ta, to sponsor a bill that limited our regional school district to, to, to a prop two and a half budget restraint. They, they never put a limit on the regional school district budgets, and so they're not subject to it, and we're under a, a regional school district contract, and they just give, it's almost like a blank check for those guys over there, they'll give us the bill...
And there's no accountability, there's no accountability.
But that's the point, we need, we need help from the legislature.
Well, towns, the towns should have accountability involved in this, we don't have any accountability in this.
So what are you gonna do, call, call up all the school committee members and say, give us some numbers that we can, that are palatable?
But in essence, we do have accountability, because we send two, three...
Three of them.
Three school committee members to, to sit on that committee every year, so, we have accountability, we have voice, it's just not happening.
The only school you don't have any accountability for is Essex Tech, so Essex Tech is the only one there is no accountability for.
I shouldn't have said it that way, then, I'm saying it, I'm saying it wrong, then, I'm saying... I'm saying it, I'm saying it wrong then. I'm saying that we do not have communication between, between the selectmen and the school committee to help us or whatever. We gotta get better relationships back and forth with the school committee or whatever, because we don't have it. They should have been in here to help us or whatever. We need to ask them to come help us, but four point seven percent increase is crazy.
Right.
It keeps going up.
Right, but I, and I do want to, I just.
The school committee is also a, a resident of either Merrimack, West Newbury, or Groveland, so these in, these increases impact them directly as well.
Agreed, agreed.
Right, and I do want to clarify, it's still a working number, so they are still working on that. That's just the most recent revision.
The voters, the, the taxpayers in this town know that we get that bill from them. And that we're the ones that have to make this budget and bring it to town meeting. The school committee doesn't show up at our town meeting. It'd be nice if they showed up there and had a question and answering session. Would, our budget is out of whack because we got a four point nine percent increase from the school committee. They should drag them into the on-the-bus session down near the town meeting and explain things. No, really?
We, we have building in Groveland. We have more building than anyone, West Newbury and, and Merrimack right now. So we're building houses at a higher rate. We're putting more kids into the schools. We're growing the schools, and et cetera, et cetera. It, 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 there's no end to this. I mean, there's no simple answer to any of it. There isn't, other than.
No, the, no.
We need to.
Building a commercial and industrial base that's bigger, that can help us support the rising cost of running this community.
Right, right, that's it. That's the answer.
Bill, one man's revenue is another man's expense. It's always that, we're all. So you know what? The budget is people. It's payroll and benefits. It's payroll and benefits. It's payroll and benefits.
Granted.
If you want to addr- address the issue, you gotta control the cost of the payroll and the benefits.
But is our payroll out of whack and our benefits out of whack?
Not here in town hall, over there, over the school department.
But over there, there is, okay. That's where we need to have representation, and we need to get it under control.
Let's talk about how much the school teachers get for working a hundred and eighty-five days, and let me tell you. And again, I hate to make everything personal, but, you know, they have early release days, and they send the kids home, and the teachers don't even work late. They won't even stay late to do their seminars and stuff. They gotta, you know, they got a gravy train over there. They got a part-time job making full-time money, and we gotta put an end to that.
Ed wanted to talk. Go ahead, Ed.
Sorry, school teachers, but that's reality, folks.
I don't think I can talk that.
Part-time job.
But, uh, Mr. Chairman, how about getting the finance committee in, or at least the chairman in at the next meeting? Find out how they want to go with it, let, uh, uh, whether they want to, uh, look at it first and, and then let us or, or vice versa. Get it right from them. Bring them in.
Do you want to come in, or do you want to just talk to, I mean, they, they have ac- they're actively meeting, so they are meeting again next Wednesday.
Can you ask that question? Or you want to bring them in?
I, or, yeah.
Bring them in.
Committee?
Bring them. No, you can, you can have just the chairman, the vice chairman, whatever.
I think they ought to send us a number that fits within, you know, you know, you got a shoe on. We got a size, you know, ten shoe, and it ought to fit in the shoe. They ought to send us a budget that's under two and a half, period. I don't want to hear anything from them. I want to sit here and get in a match with these guys.
No, you, but Ed's talking about the finance committee. You're talking about the school, right?
Oh, I'm talking about speaking, sorry.
That's okay.
We'll be on the school now.
It's quarter eleven here, so go home.
Okay, so you want me to ask the finance chair to come in?
Sure, chairman or vice chairman, yeah, yeah.
But is it, do you want to have them in, right now?
Well, no, I mean, I think you should figure out if they're gonna wait, if they want some recommendations from you before they give a final number. I mean, I think that's an important discussion, but the way that I've heard the discussion is that's how they're gonna proceed, is that's sort of the standard municipal format.
Okay, and it's getting late, so, um, I guess we're gonna probably, at this point in time, if we can shut this down, we'll carry it.
Yeah, so this will be on every bud, every meeting going forward until.
Just bring one last point up. Last year, we flipped through this book. Um, item by item, do you guys want to do that? Do a little each meeting, or how do you want to go about it?
We had a marathon session last year. I, I think that works for me, for efficiency, so that's my two cents. I think we picked it off Monday night.
I think so, too.
And if we come in regular time, six thirty, go all the way to ten, I think we'll go way through it.
Yes, but, but if I can, I believe both Ed and Dan, you're, I mean, Bill, you plan to go away at some point?
I'm going on March tenth or eleventh.
March eleventh, I got you down there. We're coming back to twenty-seventh.
Okay, you're going March eleventh to the twenty-seventh? And Ed, you're going more recently, right?
Hopefully, three.
Okay.
Coming back seventeen.
So maybe we meet March sixth, other than the next meeting you're not here, so February twenty-seventh?
That works to me, isn't it now?
Does that work? That would be the first, Ed, you'll be back by then, right?
Oh, 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 yeah, I'm gonna be back, I better be back for seventeen.
Because we're meeting on the sixth and the, what is that?
Sixteenth to twentieth.
Yes, sixth.
Meeting is sixth or the twentieth.
Twentieth is president's day.
No, that's right, so that would be the twenty-first. Twenty-first of February, we're meeting. March twentieth, we'll meet, alright?
The twentieth is president's day, right?
Yes, so we're meeting on that Tuesday. So the next meeting is Tuesday. Yes, and then in March, it is the sixth and the twentieth. So if we could do the twenty-seventh before you go away.
Of February.
Of February.
Yep, fine. February twenty-seventh. Send us out an email.
Yep, so I'll plan for that. And Dan, you said start at regular time. That would work for you?
Maybe it's better, but I mean, I'm not gonna be difficult on everything. I mean, you know, it's taxes, and I'll do, I'll do what I can to accommodate the board, and I hope they'll do the same, helping out.
So do you want to start at six thirty or seven?
Seven.
Seven? I'm good with seven because it, you're not rushing so much. Is everyone else good with seven?
Right.
Seven, yeah.
Give them three hours and four hours.
Other than twenty-seventh?
Yeah, okay. Alright, so that being said, we'll, we'll pick this up at that point. Um, one thing I want to say is that, um, um, Ed, I, and Denise met with a local bank that I think you all pretty much knew about. I just kind of want to bring you up briefly on what happened. I cannot mention any names or what have you. Um, I'll actually bring Denise and Ed up further into what, what the conversation was. Very interested in coming to Groveland, very interested in having a bank in Groveland. Um, picked an area in Groveland where they want to be. Um, meetings are very well. Uh, they were very excited to come to Groveland, and what have you. Um, I went and met the, and discussed with the landowner, or the, the landowner, or whatever you want to call it, tenant-type people who own the building, met with the gentleman, had a nice conversation with him, put them in touch with each other, and I think they're going to be in negotiations to have that bank here in Groveland. So I think that's a positive for us. They're in negoti- they're gonna enter into negotiation. We can't say right now, no.
Are there a lot of Groveland residents be using it?
Oh, yeah.
Uh, they have a strong Groveland base. I think they said six hundred?
Eight, 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 eight.
Eight hundred. So eight. It's a credit union, so it's not a, but still, um, right now we only have TD Bank in town, so, um, without saying the name, it is a credit union. Um, the benefits to our residents are, um, credit unions have strong auto loan programs, usually at lower percentages. Um, they do like the traditional, like Christmas club and vacation clubs and things like that. Um, they offer small business loans through the SBA. They work with SBA, which not a lot of, uh, regular banks do that anymore. So it would be great. Um, they, I guess, do some work with Chesterton, so they want to sort of be available to them. Um, so it would be great to have, uh, you know, another business come in and, um, you know, if the existing residents, and they can extend to more residents.
And they are looking at the best in Groveland, so.
Yep, they want to be part of the community. So if that works out, we'll welcome them. That'd be great.
Alright, so, um, at, what's it, five minutes of eleven? Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Uh, I'll second it.
On the paper?
Yes.